Good morning. It's September 24th and welcome to the Quikertack County Regular Meeting. All three commissioners are present and we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. So, business agenda.
Any changes from my seatmates?
I don't know.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Business agenda passes.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the Commissioner meeting minutes from September 10th, 2024 as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I will point out that there's one confusing piece in there, but since we don't edit minutes anymore, it can stay confusing.
Yeah.
Well, it says that, and I don't remember the order, it says that you left the room and then you left the room, but it doesn't say that he ever came back, but it says when you came back. So it, I don't know, it's weird.
Yeah, take a look at it.
I would, I would then offer a friendly amendment that we pass the minutes and allow her to go back and look at that. I think it's 10 o'clock timeframe. That, that just seems weird like we were conducting business with only one person in the room.
Okay, yeah.
I am fine with that friendly.
Okay.
Well, somebody stepped out to use the bathroom and I don't think they got noticed coming back in the room.
That was a weird meeting too. You have to go back and review it.
It was right before we Public Works came down with landfill deal.
So.
So, I just, I'm just, I don't know if they're looking at it, it might be confusing.
And Jake gave his approval for the friendly amendment, so.
Okay, so that would be the amendment we write on.
He gave his approval for the friendly amendment for you guys to go back and be able to.
No further discussion for me.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes with a friendly amendment. So we're to that portion of public comment. So we will call on anyone in the room if you raise your hand and would like to come forward and please let us know who you are if you can. And on Zoom, be sure to raise your hand or mute yourself so that we can see that you'd like to speak when we call on you and you're ready for your comment. So we'll start in the room. We have a very quiet room this morning. Three, oh. Mr. Smith is here, we know. And online, is there anybody available this morning that would like to give comments? I'm not seeing anyone yet. You'll have to unmute yourself or raise your hand, please, so we know you're online. Oh, there we go. Kaylee. Good morning.
Good morning. I actually, I just want to say I set my alarm for nine o'clock so I would stop missing public comments because I always get on way after. So, couple things. I don't know how much control you guys have over the WSU Extension Office. Last year, I had attempted to contact them multiple times to figure out how to sign our oldest up for 4H. And I never received a response back and we missed the deadline. And then, also, I've been seeing on the Golden Dale social media pages that other people are having the same issue. I did a little bit of digging and looked at the county website, the page for WSU, and their little steps to start 4H and it has an email address to contact, but that person no longer apparently works in that office. So, I said that I was going to bring it to the Commissioners because the page needs updating. People need to know who to contact. It says that it's open from eight to five, but you can't get through on the phone. Nobody responds to your emails. So I just want somebody to kind of look into that. And then I just wanted to thank you guys for broadcasting the budget workshops. It's, I've watched every single one of them. Governmental budget is apparently extremely in-depth and it's just been nice for the public to be able to see how we're looking for every penny possible. Obviously, as a homeowner, landowner, I don't really want my taxes to increase, but I also, by watching those budget meetings, understand where the deficits are. So, just wanted to thank you guys for doing that and if somebody could kind of let me know on the WSU issue because I would like to not miss the deadline this year or I'm going to have a very upset 10-year-old. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. Back in the room. Nobody's jumping forward. Anyone else online? Good morning, Roger Nichols.
Good morning, and a softball for you here for a change. I just want to know if, from each of you, if you've made special preparations for the Town Hall coming up on Thursday. That's it.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, back in the room. Not yet. Online, is there anyone else with their hand raised this morning? 7211.
Greg Wagner with seats. You're having the upcoming Town Hall. On the county website, it shows it's going to be from six to seven. One hour to talk to the citizens. Don't you think you all could talk a little longer to the citizens? After all, we pay you. You are a public servant. You're supposed to work for us. Couldn't you do more than just an hour? I'm sure there's plenty of questions that need to be answered. An hour is not enough time to answer them all. I'd also like to know now that it's been over two years since I filed the building code complaint. It's a building code complaint, has nothing to do with short-term rental. Filed it against Jake Anderson's 58 Anderson Road building for building code violations and it's never been investigated. It's been over two years. You continue to investigate other citizens' building code violations, but apparently, Mr. Anderson is special. He uses his position for special privileges and exemptions. His building code violation complaint is not being investigated. Madam Chair, can you tell me why you aren't directing Rob Van Cleve to direct George Sandate to investigate Jake Anderson's, not one, but two, building code complaints? Why does he continue to get special favors? Maybe you could give me the reason and rationale why Jake Anderson doesn't have to trust the process that he tells everybody else that they must follow? The enshrined process. And Dan Christopher, several weeks ago, you made allegations of corruption in the county, yet you have not produced one shred of evidence supporting your allegations. I'd like to know when can you produce the documents that prove there's corruption in the county? If you can't, it's just more of your lip service and BS and lies. So let's see you produce the documents that prove there's corruption. Or it's just more of the same from you? I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anyone else online would like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute yourself so that we can see you'd like to make comment? Are you ready, Mr. Smith? It's very quiet. There's nobody else raising their hand? Yeah, it looks like it's really, yeah.
Smith, Quikertack County. Here's an FYI to everybody out there. This is about our code enforcer just told me last week all my paperwork I put in.
Oh, no. See, I forgot I was supposed to press button. Cordeur enforcer told me that the paperwork I put in about two and a half years ago is no longer valid. I have to re-put them in again. So anybody out there that's complaining, well, I had to do the same thing. I had to re-put my corridor enforcer paperwork, violation paperwork in again. So it'll be done. So don't complain too loud. So, beyond that, I have noticed that at all the meetings that we've been to about the budget, well, I can see that we're going to have to pull some levers, but I'm going to beg the Board of Commissioners here, beg really hard. If you're going to pull these levers, go up a half percent and see what we can do. This is for property tax, sales tax, things like that. Let's not just jump in there and say 10% gain. Please be nice about it. We're all going to pay our taxes too. Not everybody can afford to pay taxes. It's just a food, food for thought there. The jail, since I know you guys are taking over, have you guys thought exactly how you're going to hire on more employees to help out with the jail? Because I know the posse helps out a lot down there, so if there's no posse there, you guys are going to have to be filling in for doing duties. So anyway, it's just another thought. Thank you much and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I will try online one more time. I'm going to pull the rug out from under you, Mr. Smiths for being last. Just, just in case there's somebody that would like to have thought about it and have any more comment. And I'm not, oh, there we go. Gabrielle Gilbert, good morning.
Hi. I want to say that the economics with childcare is an important part that the county should look into. As far as providing childcare as a revenue driver as well, it's allowing for families to actually work and support their, their households and it's allowing for the generation of tax dollars that are made from the salaries that people actually produce when they are allowed to work. And it's honestly something that should become a core function of the county because the need is so great in the county. I also want to say that the smear campaigns in Quikertack County should be just literally historic record because it is something that people delve into excessively. And it's unfortunate because it just, it doesn't prove anything. It's just innuendo. That is just hyperbole. And the rhetoric around smear campaigns is excessive. And, and I, I feel for the individuals that are on the receiving end of it. And it's exhausting to listen to in this county, to be honest. So, I am, I am thankful for the leadership of the county. I, I think it's hard work that you guys do and, and I am also, I support that this county addressed this situation in the Sheriff's Department concerning the jail. Because the North Star on that decision-making was the victims and that should always have been the North Star. So, for that movement and for the things that you do around that decision, I support you moving the county forward with that. Now I'd like to see movement forward on how you address the economic issue with families and childcare in the desert that we live in. And the, the rumor is that the Washington State Commerce is coming down anywhere from October 16th or 17th, the state representatives are coming. One of the things about grant dollars that are available, and they have a billion-dollar budget apparently yearly, which is mind-blowing on its own, is that you have to ask for those dollars. And it really needs to be a North Star of the county and, and city municipalities for that matter to start addressing how you bring dollars back into a county which fundamentally shows up empty on a lot of the maps that come out of Olympia when it comes to grant dollars awarded. So thank you for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you. In the room, anyone like to give comment this morning? Seeing none, I'll ask online again. One more time, anyone with comment on Zoom, please raise your hand or unmute so that we can see you'd like to speak. I'll give it a second because sometimes technology does not behave, but I'm not seeing anyone. So I think we'll close public comment and move to Commissioners. Thank you. Who's ready?
I will volunteer since it's a nice, short, easy day. Kaylee, I hear your concerns. I've read the same concerns all over Facebook for the last, I don't even know how many years, honestly, it's been a couple. I'm, I'm very hesitant to even comment on this. Because we, we did have a WSU Executive Director. But when I had a problem with that director going on four-day beach vacations to the coast to coastal invasive species workshop for six hours, be it turning in a bill for four days of vacation, I got landbasted. I got raked all over the Facebook calls that somehow I was defunding 4H, which has absolutely nothing to do with the Executive Director going on vacation. So I've tried to stay well-clear of 4H and, and everything around it. But what I can say is I, I hear your concerns and I would ask you to take them up to the Chair and hopefully the Chair will address them since the Chair is the one working with WSU on the contract. And that's about all I have to say about that. I have no issues with 4H. I just wish WSU in general would do a better job providing the services that Quikertack County pays for. Roger Nichols, do I have any special preparations for the Town Hall? Simple answer, no. I usually don't prepare for anything as far as a speaking event because I don't like to read speeches and/or read from cue cards or read from a script. I find it So I, I expect to take questions. I expect to answer questions on the fly. I believe it's more, more heartfelt and a better, true presentation for, for what somebody actually thinks. Greg, I'm going to let the other two address your concerns. Mr. Smith, I'm just going to say it, I'm disappointed that you are okay with them pulling levers to raise your taxes. I hope that fiscally conservative Republicans in this county hold this board accountable to not raising your taxes while they still are sending your tax money to wealthy campaign donors. Until they fix the issues of where they're putting your tax money, they should not be taxing you anymore. And I, I hope the public pays attention enough to get some of them budget issues fixed before they can, are willing to even entertain a tax increase. So don't take, hopefully you don't take too much of offense to my statement, but. And that's all I have for today.
If you'd like to.
Yeah, we'll just go down the road today. Kaylee, thanks for setting your alarm. Good deal. We like it when people participate and I especially participate, young people participating in our meetings and learning and moving forward with politics. We need that next generation. The WSU contract, yes, we made some changes in the WSU contract, but we worked very hard to preserve the beloved 4H project. When there is transition, sometimes things get dropped. So I will check back in with the little gal who runs the 4H for us and see what's happening and make sure that that information is getting out so everybody can sign up and the time doesn't pass. And also, I will mention to her that the webpage needs to be addressed. She may just not have thought about changing those items. So, it might have just been oversight, but we'll take care of it for you. And Mr. Nichols, special preps? The only thing I've done is tried to stay in touch with the current issues because that's usually what comes to our meetings. I have to say I wasn't in favor of this Town Hall at this time. I believe the situation our county's in and the climate of what's out there that I see at meetings, it's a bad time to try to hold a Town Hall. I think you're going to get more of the same. I think the good people that want to come in and ask land use planning questions without a format, which we were asked, our seatmates, my seatmates decided no format, no moderator, no timeframes. And I, I've been hearing from other people about their, they're probably not going to come because they don't believe they'll get their questions in. It'll be more of the same that we've heard for several months. Loud voices, not really going anywhere. Same, same old, same old. Traditional Town Halls in this county have been wonderful. I attended many of them over the years. They would go to Glenwood, they would go everywhere. And it was to make the county commissioners available and friendly to the public. So we'll see what climate we get. Mr. Wagner. Yes. STRs have been on my mind. In fact, I think it's time to bring that back up. I've had several calls about the STR regulations and where are we in that process? And it kind of stalled out. It went over to legal and then we haven't picked it back up as Commissioners. One of the concerns that was brought forward to me is short-term rentals are possibly taking up availability for regular rentals or workforce housing, which is very true, especially when you get people who participate in multiples of them in order to boost their income. So, you know, we have a lot of questions to answer that. How, when, who, what? It, it's not going to be an easy process, but we do need to pick it back up. And there's several counties that are ahead of us that we don't have to recreate the whole wheel. We can actually take some good advice from some of our other partners on that. So that will be coming back in the future. It's not forgotten. And the timeframe, I will check that for the meeting. I understood we were not going to limit time, but I will, I will check and see. I'm not, I don't remember off the top of my head if the seatmates wanted to just offer a specific timeframe, but we can ask that question. Mr. Smith, code enforcement time limits. I wasn't aware there was a time limit on your paperwork setting in, so I'll take a look at it. And budgets? I've, I've been sitting through those budget hearings and as we began this process, we barely started. I, I have positive about that. We made some very positive movement already. We brought down the apparent deficit by a huge amount. We're able to move forward and now I have some other ideas and some other things that I'd like to share with our seatmates as we move forward. That there's alternative things we can do before we impact the public. I think you heard in the last meeting from staff, the sky is not falling. We have optimum reserves. We have optimum savings. We have a lot of ways that we can adjust this budget over the next month and a half before we have to go out to the people to ask for help. And I see it as a positive budget. I think we're doing very well with it. Gabrielle, thank you again for childcare. There is something on the radar that I've looked at before that I wanted to bring back and it was something that I ran across that was a one-time impact fee for large, large industrial that came in. And I want to go back and bring that up and show it to my seatmates and see what they think. Although it's just a one-time fee, that is something that we could, it has to be for community services and that could be something if we agreed and it is possible to do it, I have to review it. But if that's possible, my idea would be dedicate that to communities for childcare. And we would capture that one-time fee and help assist with these big projects coming in because obviously they're going to bring more families and more children and more people that are workforce that need those, those benefits. And we could spend it for childcare. We could invest it, have a childcare fund, but I'll get back to that and we'll give you an update on where that idea of mine goes. And yeah, the tone in our county is very, very sad these days. And it's too bad that this is the view that is being shown of Quikertack County. I don't believe that of our county. We're good people with a good background. We were raised correctly. We know how to treat our neighbors. And I always remind myself, there's 23,000 more people out there that we represent than just what we're hearing. And the loud, the loud angry voice is always bigger than the positive voice, unfortunately. But we'll make our way through these times and turn the corner and go back to the, the county that I know we are. And not hearing from those people, the loud voice tends to think that they're the bigger voice. But unfortunately for them, what I'm hearing from others in the county is with intimidation and being drug into the hurricane, they won't do that to their lives. They'll stand behind us. They'll stand for what's good. They'll do the right thing. They'll vote the right way. But they're not going to throw their lives into this fray and I can't blame them. I, I appreciate all of them and I appreciate how hard they work and their support behind the scenes. Yeah. We have good people in this county. And Gabrielle, be sure to remind me about the October 16th, 17th Commerce meeting. I'm interested in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kaylee, you're, I'll get more directly to your comment on the social media pages. I double-checked online. It looks like the previous WSU Director has been removed from those pages. So there shouldn't be anything going to an email or phone number that doesn't exist. But we will double-check and make sure those are up to date. I will also reach out to the 4H Coordinator and have her contact you so that you don't miss your opportunity. I saw that online as well. So thank you for bringing that to us. Roger, thank you for the question about the Town Hall. Just a reminder, the Town Hall is on Thursday at 6:00 PM. It's here in the chambers, but you can also log in online. We did not set an agenda unlike many Town Halls. Usually when you have a Town Hall, there's an issue and we can do our research and the, the community can do their research. But this isn't open to all questions. This is a, hopefully not a knock-down, drag-out, anything fight. Hopefully this is, everybody comes with questions or concerns that they can raise in a positive, respectful manner. And we can, we can answer as best we can, knowing that we might have to get back to you because this isn't a one-topic conversation. I will ask that the Chair who will be moderating the, the meeting will do her very best to ensure that it is respectful conversation on both sides. Greg Wagner, on that Town Hall, we set that for one hour because if we set it for two hours, we have to stay here for two hours. So it is set for one hour so that we can also extend it to two hours if necessary. And this is the discussion that was had in open session amongst my seatmates and that's why it shows one hour. But it can be extended and if there are people who are still being respectful and still have questions, we will absolutely stay later. Mr. Smith, thank you for coming to the budget meetings and being involved. It means a lot to me. The budget is the, probably the most important thing that the Board of County Commissioners does. It sets the work for the next year and it, there's a lot to it. Also, thank you for being open to the ideas that come forward in those budget meetings. That is an option that we could raise the property tax one-half of a percent rather than the 1% that we raise. I will let you know that when we raise it 1%, we bring in about $55,000. I can, you've seen the budget. You know that our expenses are going up by far more than that. Orders of magnitude larger than that. By raising the sales tax one-half of a percent, we cannot do that. We are to the point where we can only raise the sales tax by one-tenth of a percent and I think there's two options. We can do that without a vote of the people, people, and I believe there are two other options where we can raise it one-tenth with a vote of the people. So if we took every chance we had, we could raise it four-tenths of a percent, but that would also still take multiple years in order for it to go through the process to do it. But those are just some of, some of the options and some of the levers and thank you for being involved in that. And thank you for being involved in that. Gabrielle, gosh, it's not even October yet and the smear campaigns have begun and the accusations and the innuendos and everything that, that we've been dealing with for three and a half years sitting up here, Dan and I. And it's tiring. It's tiring on the community, it's tiring on the commissioners, it's tiring on our staff. And I would just like to say, I'm sorry that this is where civics and politics has gone in this country. We see it at a national level and we see it at a local level. The difference is at the local level, it's about your neighbor, it's about your family, it's about your friends. And it affects you and it affects all of us. So thank you for pointing it out and thank you when you do to always try to not add to it. Because so many times when we're attacked, we attack back and that's just our natural reaction. We get held to a very high standard up here. And we try to do our best to not let any of the attacks affect us. But I want you, everybody to know, we're human too. And we try to do our best. And thank you for the thank you for our time and service. We don't hear that very often when we're sitting up here. And I hope that after my time is up, the next board hears it on a weekly basis. Because there is a lot of things that, that the public doesn't see, that's not on recording, that takes up a huge amount of time and effort in our lives. And many of the decisions that we make are not easy decisions, they affect our neighbors. And there's a lot of stress involved with the position. And I hope that the people who sit in my seat in the next decades and generations to come can do the best they can to keep their sense of self and their sense of happiness while sitting here, taking the abuse and complaints and everything else. And with that, I'll leave it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay.
If, if I may have a second, Madam Chair. At some point today, I would like to add a conversation to our business agenda so that we can just have five minutes to kind of go over a town hall format. But I didn't really want to throw it on the business agenda now because we might find a 20 minute gap somewhere that we can throw it into. So rather than add it now, I would just like to leave it open. And if we find a gap, then we can discuss adding it at that gap.
Sure. Or we can move to afternoon to new business or unfinished business if we don't find a gap.
Right. Perfect. I just don't want to put it in the afternoon and then go to lunch at 11:15 or something.
I think we have time before 10:00 AM because it's only 9:33 and we only have two things on the agenda. So. For those who are listening, we'll get to it after we deal with the next two things on the agenda. If that works, Madam Chair.
That works.
And it can go under miscellaneous reports if that works for you, Commissioner Christopher.
Okay. So consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with six items.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, I was asleep at the mic.
Uh, payroll.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of $475,575.02.
What was the second motion?
Motion and, or excuse me, any discussion? Motion and a, what the heck, where did I go? Dan, you passed it my way. So.
Pass it to your right.
Any hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Jake, you're next. Okay, Commissioners' miscellaneous reports. Discussion about two applications received for the Veterans Advisory Board position, District Number One.
I would just mention that it's not my district, so I will continue my belief that that recommendation should come from that district's commissioner. I do myself add a little extra oomph to the one that's been here the longest or the one that's had the application on file the longest, but that's not my only concern. I think both applicants are good. So whichever the District One person would like is fine with it.
Mr. Anderson?
So I believe we got, we have two applications on file. Has both of you reviewed both of them? And do either of you, I mean, it sounds like Commissioner Christopher's fine with, with either. How do you feel Commissioners?
I'm fine with either two. I'll leave that up to you for your district. I'm glad that we have two.
Did we get any kind of a recommendation from the Veterans Board on preference? So I haven't seen any, so I'm assuming we haven't, but. It's one of those in situations like this, I kind of wouldn't mind having the Veterans Advisory Board research the candidates and pick, but rather than us just throwing darts at an artboard. But that's not how it's set up, so.
And I only know one of the two and I don't know the other. I know one, Mr. Williamson provided a full letter and information. And I do know Mr. Williamson. And he does a great job in everything that he does. But so without knowing Mr. Kelly, I would agree that a decision by the Veterans Advisory Board or a recommendation from them would be the best for my, my thoughts.
So.
Reach out to them.
Do, is that the guidance from the board to reach out to the Veterans Advisory Board? Provide them with two applications and see if they want to make a recommendation?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm, I'm good with that too, so let's do that. I mean, they're the ones that are going to have to work with these people on a day to day basis, so.
And maybe they've built a relationship and have heard from them.
I mean, I have worries with that too, because that's kind of the same mentality as the EMS board, but.
All right. Any other miscellaneous reports or comments?
Apparently. Do you want to make a motion added to the business agenda to have the discussion, Mr. Jake, or just do it the way it is?
I think, being it's internal, it's fine the way it is and we already discussed.
Wholeheartedly agree. So we've kind of nonchalantly talked about the format, but I, it's not that I want to set the format in stone or anything, but I think the public knowing what the format is and maybe the, the chair giving the public inner opening remarks, what the format is could be very helpful to keep the the mood friendly. So my thinking of a town hall is, is literally questions and answers. It's not necessarily the citizens standing on a soapbox for three minutes and giving a speech. They have every opportunity to do that on Tuesday. It's ask a question, get an answer, ask a question, get an answer. So that's the format I would prefer to see. I would like to, I mean, just same idea, how long does it take to, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just had a question about that type of format. If a question is given to one particular, they can state one particular commissioner or from all three of the board. If that commissioner gives that question, but then something pops into your head and you want to answer, how are we going to, what do you want to do with that?
So my thought was, I would like everybody to be able to ask a question, get answers from all three board members. Cause we all have three different views on some subjects, not all. And I hate the, the phrase, we, as in the commissioners and one person answering, because you could get three different opinions. I would like to have questions asked that stick to a short, one minute question. Have the board answer it, but I would also like the board not necessarily set a time limit on their answering the question, but try to hold ourselves accountable for time and, and answer as thoroughly, but as briefly as we can without 20 minute speeches back. And try to keep ourselves to that one minute, two minute kind of timeframe again. And then allow the, the question person to be able to have a follow up question.
Okay.
And then we all get another minute, two minutes to answer that question. You may not need a minute or two, it's like, I agree with Mr. Anderson, done. And so we can save time that way by, by limiting the excessiveness of our remarks. But also we have to make the, the person asking the question actually get to the question. As opposed to a three minute speech of personal attacks. And I would, I would like the, the question answering by the board to rotate. So if it starts there, then goes there, then goes here, then the next time it starts there, goes here, goes there. So we all just rotate through some of the commissioners, the first one to answer and the no commissioner is always the last one to answer. That rotation seems totally fair. I would give each person the question and then the follow up. And then until the room is empty and nobody else has any questions, then we can always go back to the people that have already asked questions.
And do you prefer questions, not comments? You want everything in a question form?
Question form and not, hopefully not five questions in one sentence. So literally if they ask the question and yet they moving on to the next question, you might have to go, whoa, whoa, whoa. One, one question at a time.
Six in there.
And, and put a stop to the lecture in order to be able to answer the question. Now do you have a follow up question?
Okay.
Because that, that's going to keep the and, you know, you can always make a rule of no personal attacks to anyone in the room, including the audience or anybody on Zoom and but then you'd have to be willing to enforce that. So I don't want to. I'll throw that idea out there, but I don't want to make that a recommendation since you're kind of the moderator. You may, you run the meeting how you want.
Thanks for that.
I'll do it for you if you want.
No, I'm good.
I don't mind being the bad guy.
I am good with it. I'm not going to be a bad guy.
But I, I mean, how do you guys feel about that kind of a format? If we limit them to questions and not speeches and then we try to answer their questions as in a trying to keep our speech time down.
Well, I think our speech time is what they want to hear. They want to hear each of our thoughts on, on, and I know that people who've come up and asked before, they wanted to have more of a dialogue, less than a us versus, because you get the, the them than us, you know, on Tuesdays. And so the, the request that I recall from at least a couple of people was, we want this to be a dialogue. Have a conversation with us back and forth. Let's talk about this at, at large. That gets difficult when there's three of us up here, because how do you do that with all three or one person talk? And I think a lot of that's going to come down to, A, the tone of the meeting. B, who, what the topics are and what you can, can't answer. Ghost going, you know, them asking a question, we run through it, give them an answer. I don't know if that's, that's in essence, the, the real purpose of the, the town hall that they, that they wanted. And so I guess I can see it both ways. I definitely think that, you know, having, that's why like the last town hall, I thought was very successful. There was a moderator. So the moderator removed all the personal attacks and everything else. And it was just questions and then we had that conversation. And, and that was very successful, I thought. Now we're, we're opening this up saying, okay, you can say whatever you want to say.
I think the problem with the moderators, a lot of people feel their questions got screened. The hard questions got screened and only the softballs made it through. So by removing the moderator, you remove that accusation. I understand your dialogue point and, and boy, I wish we could do that too. But then when you have somebody that's uber passionate about a topic and you go back and forth too much, you, you start losing control of the meeting. And I know you weren't at the sheriff's meeting for the beginning stages of it. So you didn't see that one go off the rails. Well, okay, well, if you watch it, you can see how a sole individual can literally take over a meeting and make it very frustrating for everybody else in the room to ever have a chance to speak, which I think is Commissioner Zoller's worry, going into an open town hall by getting only a few members being able to take over a meeting and people not being able to answer planning questions or. So I was trying to have some kind of a a scope to be able to keep that from happening.
So one way that I think would be beneficial, because to me, conflict is good. Having the good, having the discussions and the conflict over it, it gets to the truth at the end of the matter. And, and hopefully will enlighten us and hopefully will enlighten them. My way of doing it would be if somebody comes up, has a topic, asks their question, which then we try to respond to them. But if somebody else in the audience has a follow up question on that topic and would like to, they could raise their hand or raise their hand online. We, the, the chair would call them up and then they could ask their question with regards to that topic. And so if we have three or four, maybe five topics throughout the evening, it would feel like more of a continuation of the conversation and discussion. You don't just open it up so that, because I saw at the town, at the sheriff's town hall where one person started talking and then somebody in the audience started answering the person that was talking and it didn't go through the moderator, which is the chair, and that's how you go off the rails. But if it's ask your question and then that starts a topic and then somebody else would like to continue on that topic, they can raise their hand and start it. Once that topic's petered out, the, the chair can say, okay, that topic's over with. And then what we do is then we say, is there somebody else who has another topic who would like to answer, ask a question? And then you could get the best of both worlds.
I think too, being put in the position as the facilitator moderator, it would be very easy if we are moving through topics and moving through questions and it digresses how it has. If as moderator, I call out that we, I think instead of myself just calling it out, that we have covered that question and we're just digressing into the fritter fratter that goes on. I think I would like to turn to my seatmates and have them agree that that topic has been fully explored and talked about. And should we move on and not answer this question? And I'd like that consideration from both of you. I don't think there's any reason to burn it down.
Dropping my way and, or trying to take some of mine, but do it Jake's way and stay on topic.
Kind of a combination.
But I do believe it, it would behoove us to only have one citizen come to the mic and address the topic with us, not allow the other citizens or the other Zoom people to get in on that topic until that person has been asked and answered. But are you going to give them 45 minutes? Because they're passionate about their topic. There's, there's going to be other people that want to top on that topic. But until you tell them, okay, we've heard enough of you. And how are you going to do that? When the first person is the person that's going to spend 45 minutes?
Well, I think they get to ask the question, we respond to it. And so they've had their 30 seconds or one minute, because they're probably going to want to explain what they want to ask for a question. So I would keep it at three minutes or less. And then after we've responded to that, then we let anybody else who wants to continue that train of thought or that topic to then come forward and ask their question or online at that moment. And then they get to ask their question, you know, within a minute and a half or so, because the, the topic's already been explained. And then we can respond to that. And so then there, if there's more back and forth with regards to the topic.
How about instead of giving them a three minute time limit or a minute and a half time limit, they get to ask a question?
Right.
Now it takes them five minutes to ask the question, okay. But get to the question. And once, I, my worry is they're going to ask 17 questions in three minutes.
The.
Or five minutes.
Right.
It's just going to be the never ending barrage of questions slash accusations slash questions slash.
If we want to go by questions, I think the norm is.
I'm having a back and forth with them and giving them five questions, but we need to stop them when they ask the first one so we can answer it.
The norm is, and you see that in our public comment, that if you give people comment space and you give them three minutes, usually they've explained where they're at in that first minute. The second minute digresses kind of into a little bit of different, and then the third minute goes, goes off topic.
Or repeats themselves.
And so I think if we limit it to have them come prepared to ask a question. And I think one minute to ask a question is just fine and set the topic. And then we could have rebuttals after that and.
Yeah, we can set it low and if people don't feel they can get their questions, we can, we can increase that.
We can help them out.
It's easy enough for staff to do, you know.
Or you can start it with a, you need to ask the question and then we can have dialogue.
Right.
But the dialogue is, you know, it, it can turn into the.
No, it can't, we can't let that.
Jake has a short term rental, blah, 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 you know. If you want, if you have a specific question about that, feel free to ask it, but.
Right. Yeah, this is an information meeting for us to help you with information about our county.
Like I said, I just, I, and it's like you've said that some people don't want to attend because they know the meeting is going to get hijacked. We have to control the hijack.
Yep.
And you do that by not allowing a handful of individuals on a handful of different topics to have the, all the time. You have to say, okay, we've, we've answered you. Now you need to go sit back down and when we get done with everybody else, we'll be happy to have you again.
So if you or Jake have other suggestions, what I'll do is take my afternoon time to craft kind of how this would work and what I see. Share it with Elise and staff and then they can share it with you to see if you want to change.
Thursday during budget too.
Okay.
That's an open meeting.
Okay, I'll try. Okay, I'll try to get a format ready.
I do have an update for my commissioner, uh, for my seatmates. Um, I did send an email to our four H director Harley. And her email is working and the phone number is working. Um, she did get in touch with those people who were accidentally emailing the old four H program coordinator. Uh, and she's looking forward to hearing from Kaylee soon. So if Kaylee, uh, you can go online and send her an email. Um, to.
Is the county.
Harley dot Cleaver at WSU dot edu. She is waiting for your email and I know you're still online, so.
Does our county.
Thank you.
Email have hers or Abby Brian's email in it?
No, it has Harley's everything online.
They must've saw the Facebook post and fixed it, because it originally had Abby's when the Facebook stuff started.
Oh, okay.
Great. Good for them.
Well, I'm glad it got solved.
Yeah, thank you, Jake. I'll take it off my list. Okay, so that's good for now. We'll move forward.
And then, yeah, that's good. I was.
We'll see what we get this afternoon and tomorrow or Thursday and we'll wrap up what that format will be. Any other miscellaneous reports or comments? We have nine minutes left.
Uh, just an update. I think we canceled the morning work session, um, on Thursday. Um, I'm.
It was to me.
I believe that's what we did, right?
Received information that it needs to be posted. We have to repost for the workshop for one thing.
For one thirty. Okay. And so I'm, so I've got the, the LSC meeting in the afternoon. We've got our budget in the afternoon and I'm supposed to be in Salem Wednesday morning for the bridge staff. I'm, who's going to try to fly down there tomorrow night, lie back here at one thirty for our meeting. And then we've got our town hall, but then I get stuck here, because then I can't fly home, because it will be past dark. And so now I'm still trying to figure out how, how to do it all on Thursday. So. Um, I didn't know until this morning that we'd canceled the morning work session, so I'm trying to figure it all out. I may end up having to, um, just, uh, drive and then I'd leave Salem at twelve. And then I'll just call in for the afternoon work session as I drive up here and it'd be probably be three thirty when I get here. Huh?
That might be wiser.
It's just going to be a long, long day. Either way. So I just letting you guys know that I'll likely just have to call in for the budget in the afternoon.
And for you, if you're in Salem in the morning, you wouldn't be able to call in or be on Zoom anyhow. I mean, if we did morning session.
Well, that's why in the morning session, what, who we did have on there, I was like, I, I don't have any questions and I was going to send them in ahead of time. For everybody, uh, but I just found out that we don't have anything going on now, so I'll, I'll just do that online.
Okay. And yeah, I would, I would like to say, uh. Uh, it's, it's been kind of fast and furious with everything, but if we can look ahead at the budget workshops and get everything set. For the next month, that really helps me for scheduling other meetings and, um, uh, that would be great.
Yeah. And I think when I look at our calendar, it's, it's now showing who's, who's on when. Uh, for the twenty six as well as the third.
Okay.
So that'll, that can help everyone.
Really helps me.
Yeah, I don't know that we can get a month in advance because that thing is fluctuating on a meeting by meeting basis. Um, I think you can get a week or two ahead, but.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah. You, you, you plan for a month ahead and I guarantee you none of it will be accurate by the time you get there.
At least I'm planning. I try.
Then it's one of those where we just have to hold Thursday open and take.
Yeah, take what you get. Yeah. Okay, um, I attended the airport board meeting, the monthly airport board meeting last Friday. That was a good meeting. They're doing really well down there, moving forward with some projects and fuel's been selling like crazy, which is great. They've over exceeded what their anticipation was for fuel sales. Um, so that board is doing well. Uh, Friday, I attend the Southwest Aging and Disability Board, which is one of my favorites. I always like them. Five counties get together and talk about seniors, uh, and do good things for the seniors. So that's, that's good work. I enjoy that board. And, uh, it's interesting to interact with our other commissioners and see what's up in their counties. What else? Anybody? Nothing for anybody else? So, uh, we still have five minutes. So if you have work you're doing or something, we'll just.
For things to sign and there's nothing over here for me to sign. Jake's hoarding everything over there.
That's a slim stack too. Oh, fishing's going well. Lots of fish in the river. Salmon are in. I'm going to work with you on it. Uh, I'm going to draft something crafting all the notes I took from them. I'll work with you and see how that all functions. I'll leave it with you to share with them and we'll come back and talk about it again to see if they have comments or questions. We'll probably. Make a final, hopefully late today. If we can't, we'll do it on Thursday, which I like to have it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to have it. Kind of before Thursday, so they, the public knows, but in all reality, as long as we finalize it at. Four thirty, you know, during the budget workshop. Um, you're going to be able to read it out and you just got an email from Roger Nichols about a one he did over there, so. Um, it's, it's that initial speech and kind of. What they need to be, understand they're going to be held accountable to.
Well, and I'm going to have staff do a printout. Pick it up when they come in the room. They'll know what our format is.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think a short, brief, little explanation, one paragraph posted on the door. Um, might be good.
Yep.
Um, posted on the signup sheet, so they can't say they never saw it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the top of the signup sheet has your, has your, uh. Uh, what is expected in the question center?
Yeah.
Uh, in, in, in order to sign up to speak, you are, uh, confirming your, um. Allegiance to the. Acknowledgement, yeah. So.
That you will adhere to. Oh.
If we ask a question, when we ask a question.
Yes, but, but I want the ability for all three to be able to answer it because the answer you get from one. You ask me a question, I guarantee you they might have a different answer than the one I gave you. So I don't want to speak for the board of commissioners. Well, that, well, that's what I said, but they might disagree with my answer. So I don't want a commissioner speaking for the board. Because we have a different opinion, so. If, if you ask it a question of Lori and I agree, I'm just going to say I agree. If I have one more little tidbit, I agree. But I also think this, I'm going to try to limit the amount of time I take, but I, I think. We need to have the ability for the other commissioners to disagree with my answer or for me to disagree with theirs. Um, that's civics. I mean, it's not all going to agree and personally, I think it's quite healthy when a board doesn't agree.
Um, and it needs to be about county business. And so when you ask a co, uh, commissioner about one thing. A lot of times that's more personal in nature than county business in nature. And so that's why it usually gets interesting.
Yes.
Because we are a board and the whole board makes a decision. At least.
Mister Jeff, before you start, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I got a, um, a message from a citizen about the, uh, Sundale Road. Project and they're hearing rumors that this is a phase one to update. The, the next segment of Highway eight. And I told them I was unaware of a next segment. But can you tell me if there is a next segment that maybe they need to contact you because there are plans for further development? Or not?
There could always be a phase two.
But there, is there anything on our six year transportation plan?
Six year on the six year to do anything.
That's what I thought, but I told them I would check with.
You are correct. How long was Sundale on the six, six year road? Uh, it was on for a little while.
Couple of years.
Couple of years. Sometimes they, you know, and we'll talk more about this with the six year, but I'll give you a quick. They'll jump if they were grant eligible and that one was grant eligible scored very high. Um, and it's, again, it's a hundred percent paid grant, no county dollars, which is extremely rare. And you only get that if you can get a road that scores real high. Now let's say we decided to do. Oh, I don't know, something Billmore, that's when that pops up. That doesn't score very well. We probably would have got zero dollars for grant funding.
And do we have a list of projects, I'm assuming our six year plan? That when we have the ability to get funding, you then come to the board and say, these are the projects we could turn in. This one will probably score high, this one will probably score lower, and that's essentially how we pick which project is based off which ones you think. Is that correct?
That is correct. And you, yes, you do sign the grant, uh, letters. So yes, we talked to you before we apply. And sometimes they move up, but keep in mind. Because of budget reductions over the years, our six year doesn't have any of those type of projects on. So, because we don't put stuff on that we don't have, that we will not have funding for.
So how do you come up with a list of potential projects that you'll be applying for state or federal money for?
When the grant comes out, then we look at what we have. And we don't have to have it on the six year. Um, you know, we quit years ago, we putting, putting on stuff we don't have. That we would not have budget ability to do. That was even a prior board's decision not to, and this board has held that same decision. Not to put on a bunch of projects, just to put them on there.
Put them on there.
The whole, with the fact that, okay, yeah, you're on the six year of the six year, but you're going to be on the six year, the six year forever, because we're never going to have.
You're going to be a year twenty eight. Uh, next question, does this Sundale Road project actually incorporate the? Uh, let's call it the mouth, the entrance to the road, it was school bus route. I know that one was on the plan forever. They were talking about it on the previous board, but.
It still is on the plan. That one is still is on the plan because it is a safety concern.
And we couldn't get funding under this grant to do that program.
No, we're still looking, hopefully to get safety funding. Federal safety dollars to, to do something with that intersection.
Uh, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, we got an email from Roger Nichols that I think would, uh, work fine for putting on the door. It's pretty funny.
I'll take a look at it.
I heard about that. It's the one I just told you that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that he thinks that the same thing that applies for Wasco County would actually work here is.
No.
I don't think it will.
This is how he started his, uh, candidate's night in Wasco County. Political conversation in this county has degenerated into accusations and named. That ended when you walk through these doors. Such behavior will not be tolerated and violators will be asked to leave. This is a meeting for grownups. And he said he had a two hour conversation and not a single problem.
Great. Thank you, Roger Nichols.
And I would say, try it and let's see if click attack counting is the same as Wasco.
That's great.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, so we still have a pay estimate to Stripe right. Um, and, uh, in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred seventy eight. Uh, that is for doing, um. Pavement markings mainly in white salmon, I believe. Is where we did the crosswalks and stop bars. Uh, on Loop Road. Uh, and again, you guys approved the consent agenda. Thank you. Um. We finally got real, actually it wasn't as bad as it has been. Um, so we released retainage to the app. To finish the crushing contract. Actually, that one was better than it has been in the past. Usually it's almost a year to give them their money back, but it's better, it's better this time. Okay, that I'll turn over to construction plan.
All right, uh, Sundale Old Highway eight, contractors finishing up subgrade and placing a rock surfacing. The annual striping project, they're back for the second and final phase. Uh, it started yesterday on the west side of the county that's picking up the newly chip sealed roads and, um, construction projects this year. On design, sunny side road overlay, we're doing the final internal review of plans and specs, uh, hopefully getting that out to add shortly. Bridge repair bundles consultant is working towards sixty percent plans. The Bickleton overlay box springs vicinity, I did approve, receive approval from Washstop for the funding. So we're tentatively planning for an October advertisement date for that project and it'll be next year's construction. Uh, white plastic.
How much money was that one, by the way?
Three, two, I believe. I don't know the exact number, but somewhere right there.
A good chunk.
Good chunk. Uh, white plastic edge lines, the staff's continuing to move the project through design and Washdot approvals to get that out for advertisement. Uh, same goes for the curb warning signs, safety project. The road safety plan update project, we received proposals last, uh, two weeks ago now for the consultant. And one has been selected, so now we're working through the award process through Washdot to get that consultant on board. And that's all I got, Jeff.
Okay, on maintenance side, uh, east side crews are working on Bickleton Highway in preparation of favor coming next year. Uh, West End is doing FEMA brush clearing. Uh, from the storm event. On the upcoming facility side, uh, Superior Court, there's no court next week. We will put in the doors. There's been one hiccup with one set of doors. It's not on us, but the doors are specially constructed because of what they're made out of. They're made out of a, a mahi, an African mahogany. Thank goodness the grant pays for those, because.
Somebody spared no expense when that was built, right?
Yes, and you have to match, but they paid for it. So, but anyway, they cut windows in all four doors. And so, um, two of the doors will go back. But we will finish, we'll put the doors in, black out the windows and then contractor will send the doors back. Um, but other than that, we should, because next week we'll hang the doors to finish up the trim. There's a little bit of carpet finishing. That needs to be done and that one will be about ninety percent, ninety-five percent wrapped up after next week. On the events, we have the Harvest Festival this weekend in the exhibit building and the trunk or treat has been, uh, we've signed off on that. And that is scheduled for Halloween in Clintwood. It's a traditional event that happens every year. Pioneer Center, we're doing our fall cleanup at the Pioneer Center. So we have some landscaping we're doing. We pressure washed the building the other day. And window washing is coming in to town next week, so, uh, we're trying to get that thing squared away for the winter. Uh, jail fence, uh, to, to bring you back up to speed on that, all the cell vents have been upgraded except for one cell. And that one, we have a stop work order to do. The common areas still need to be upgraded. Those are special orders. They're all different sizes. And, uh, but those all have cameras on them, whereas the cells do not. So that's where we stand on the jail vent upgrades. Uh, Trout Lake Park, we're still doing RCO grant work there. And KVH is still using the, um, kitchen. Um, on others, other things, uh, we received notice that we finished second out of fourteen. For the courthouse grant. And I appreciate the board's support. We will talk more about that and budget, what that means. But, uh, this is to paint the courthouse, which really, really needs it. Um, we are starting to lose, we'll bring pictures or if somebody can feel free to walk over, stucco is coming off the courthouse. It's not a good scenario. Uh, but we did receive grant money to paint the courthouse. Uh, there's. And we'll get more into it about the budget. But basically, you know, we use the HVAC systems for match. So it's money that was already planned to be spent. There is an, uh, remodel that has to be done because of the asbestos abatement. That is the only additional match. That's about a hundred grand, but we were kind of, we were planning on doing that anyway eventually. But it's six hundred thousand dollars to paint the courthouse and they're paying for it all.
So by. Me pushing to push that project back a year so that we can do the AC and the thing, we now.
What's that?
So now, right, but if we would have painted it this year instead of.
We would have paid for it. You are correct.
That's what I'm saying.
I think he's going to follow that up with, so that's six hundred thousand dollars that does. I think he's gonna follow that up with, so that's six hundred thousand dollars. It doesn't need to be in the budget, which means we can spend that six hundred thousand dollars somewhere else. Or a project.
Still has to be in the budget, sir.
Yeah, it's gotta be in the budget.
Right, but there's a revenue with it. So if we.
There was a revenue with it when we brought it to you.
It's capital improvement plan. You don't get to suck it over into the general.
No, no, but but there's, there's a revenue where last year we didn't have a revenue.
Right, right, but we didn't have it last year on the plan. We bumped it out. This year on the plan, it's there with the assumption that we were gonna get the grant. We were thinking positive.
Oh, we put, we put it, the assumption that the grant dollars were coming in?
Yes.
Okay.
We showed it with grant dollars. That is correct. So it is there with the grant.
But it's in this year's budget, right?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
No, twenty-four, it was supposed to be twenty-four, but we did the AC and the.
Right.
In the jail to stop the leaking instead of painting the building.
Yes. But no, we, you know, unless there's still a possibility that the state could not decide not to fund that program. But.
They wouldn't dare.
Well, they have not not funded that program forever. It's always. And because I feel very, cause they, they only, they never fund the whole thing. They just don't. I mean, the ask is like. I think the ask this time is eight million, eight or nine million. They'll usually fund two million. But because we finished second. They start at the top and work down as far as they can get.
How much did the guy in first ask for them?
Eight hundred thousand.
So we're underneath.
So we're underneath. They'll go at least four down. So you know, unless something wild happens.
How long has the paint been on that building? When's the last time it was painted?
Uh, I equate it to before Pam had her son. So, and I think he's twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So it's been a long time.
The majority of what I hear from the public is that doesn't need painted it. It can last forever. So there will be a.
Would it have been painted when jail was updated in the eighties? It was painted after that.
It was painted, well, yeah, it was painted after that.
The nineties.
It's been twenty plus years.
It was.
That's when we got the pretty colors.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, state commissioners owe, or owes the history.
I'm old.
So yeah, that was the last time it was painted. It's an expensive building to paint because of the way it's laid out. Because you gotta go through, because you got all those colors. You gotta paint one color. And you gotta go back and go all the way around, paint that color, let it dry, go back, paint the other color. Cause you gotta.
Paint it purple with pink polka dots.
Well, it'd be probably cheaper, but I don't think that, I don't, I don't know that people would be really excited about.
Green and yellow.
It'd be tough though. We have to sell that. Since they're paying for it, I got nothing. Okay, so I wanted to bring you up to speed with the winter storm event and what we've heard. We've heard good news and bad news. Tater, is he in here yet? No, he's not. Anyway, uh, Rob got us, we were able to get some insurance money to cover some of the buildings. Um, not all the insurance money, didn't cover everything, covered about thirty thousand dollars. So we.
Covered thirty? Out of how much?
Uh, right around fifty. So we got. It's better than nothing. The other stuff wasn't because of it was smaller, it didn't cover it. And then we have the five thousand dollars. So it was thirty-five thousand totals what they covered. We have the five thousand dollar deductible, which was news to me. I thought we had ten, which is better news. Uh, so we, we're gonna do okay on that. We still are playing with FEMA with the bill. So there's still a potential we'll get money for Annex Four and some of the other stuff we did with the building. So there's still that potential.
That of the fifty, that would fill in the rest of the fifty?
Yeah, we're hoping to fill in the rest of the fifty with that. We'll still have to do a supplement to recognize that, that expense and that month, that revenue, but it's a.
We like, we like supplementals where there's revenue.
There's revenue coming, so we'll be doing that. Um, it hasn't, working with FEMA, it has not been as good as news on the roadside. They keep cutting things out that they'll pay for. So now they basically cut out the whole storm event. As far as the, as far as the reaction to the storm event. So they were, they weren't gonna do snow removal. We're like, okay, we knew that. We had a good idea. And we said, well, sanding, they were gonna do sanding. Now they decided they made the brilliant idea. No, we're not paying for sanding either. So that means none of roads reset, all that overtime we have to eat. The only thing they are gonna pay for is the tree removal. And we're still working with them on Cook Road. That's been an uphill battle. Seth's been working with them kind of nonstop to get something through, but that's where we stand with FEMA. Um, and just to let you know, uh, we've been working with, now it's Keywit. There, uh, we've given them permission. They are going to start preliminary survey. Commissioner Anderson is probably more aware of this than everybody else, cause that's for the Hood River Bridge. So they are starting to move forward.
Perfection question, the bridge is going to the right, sorry, let's say the east side of. Where the bridge currently is, or is it going to the west side, west side of?
About a hundred and fifty feet. So it goes across that property that the county owns down there.
Right, but is it going to change anything with the tribal boat ramp down there?
Uh, no, the tribal, it's gonna land on our property, not the tribal boat ramp property. At some point, we may ask the tribe if we can go through that property so that we can build a causeway. Or a row, uh, or trestle out there so that we can get out there to do the foundation work. So that, that's still a possibility. Uh, otherwise it's gonna make it, it's gonna be expensive to get to that shallow section out there.
Okay, got it.
But that was just, uh, they sent a, a, a request for, so they can go on the property. And they'd sent one back in twenty nineteen in which we allowed them to go on the property. So they're just doing a little bit more, uh, looking at the ground and dirt work and looking for wetlands and all that stuff is all it was.
Yeah, we just let them know that they need to get permission from other people's property or come in from the river.
Right, to get there.
To get there. Yeah, if somebody calls and asks what are they doing down there? That's what they're doing. So that's good news. They're moving forward.
Just tell them they're putting radio colors on spotted frogs.
One other piece of good news, I heard that FHWA will fund emergency repairs. For the guardrail that was damaged at the fire along Alderdale Road. So we're receiving funding to pay for portion of that.
Yeah, it's just wearing out all your, your wonderful, great, gifty news.
Well, we have.
Blowing it all in one shot here.
There's good news, bad news, because it'd be nice.
I'm sitting here thinking there's bad news coming. He's prepping us for something.
So what is the, what is the overall cost that you figured on uh, the overtime on the stone, storm side that they won't cover?
I'm not sure now what it is. I. Well, um, I think for snow and I don't want to, I don't really wanna say, cause I could be off. I, I'll have to look at, I'll get it to you next.
But is it orders of magnitude higher than what we're getting covered by insurance on the other side?
Oh, yes.
And so what does that do for a supplemental this year? Do we have the money? Did you guys?
We cut back on what we did. That's what we did.
Okay, that's why I just, I'm trying to make it clear for the public.
That's what we do. And that's why when people say, how come you're not grading?
Cause we did more sanding.
Yes, exactly. We, we applied, you know, and it gets, it'll be tight. It's really tight for us. It has been. I mean, we've helped and we've solved the ramifications. We haven't backfilled some positions, which now we are starting to, cause we need to. Because we can't run with down four people on the west side. So we've actually back, we backfilled some, yes.
How many are we down now?
Uh, we're down still one, plus a foreman, which we're working on that. Uh, we have hired three people. And we had hired, we had hired two, well, we hired four total. And three of them have washed out already, so.
And we've got three new ones?
And we have three, two new ones that are starting.
Okay.
They all come with a CDL or do you guys put them through a?
Well, two of the one, three that washed out came, did not come with CDLs. And uh, one guy had a problem. I can't get into too deep. And so he couldn't get a CDL. That was on him, not on us. And so that eliminated him. The other person decided he didn't want it, decided he could get a job someplace else, flip burgers and make just as much money or something like that. So he decided he didn't wanna go through it. And so he's gone now too. Uh, we have one more person that has, doesn't have a CDL. The other people we were fortunate enough to get do have CDLs, but it's, it's hard. Because they're paying, the truck companies are paying a ton of money right now to get people with CDL.
How do they have to get a CDL? Do they have to actually go to like an IIT, a bar by themselves for three weeks? I mean, how time consuming is that?
It's, so what the.
Not something that can train on the job or get any class credit or, or anything. They're off X number of hours somewhere.
There is a little bit and we've looked into that. The state keeps flipping flopping back and forth on that. What, so what we've done with the, what we've done, what we offered up is, is they pay for the class. The person, so they have some skin in the game and we will pay them. They come to work for us. They actually work. And then the days that they go to school, we'll go ahead and pay them too.
How many days of school are we talking about?
Uh, I, I think it's a couple of days a week. They go to school, something like that. But we haven't done anything yet.
Right, that's what I'm trying to figure out. How many hours total this schooling?
Uh, I could tell you, I could look into it. I don't.
Yeah, I have a ballpark in your head.
Do we have an agreement that if they don't stay for six months or eight months after their schooling, that will, we won't? Cover the schooling cost for them?
Cover the schooling cost.
But we're paying them to be there.
We're, we're paying them to be there, which we can't really go back on, cause they've already, you know, we've already paid them. But at least we're not paying for the schooling. Schooling's a couple of grand. Again, we have yet to have any. We hired two people. Neither one of those made it. We have a third that we're thinking will make it, but we'll see.
Where's the schooling? Yakima?
Uh, there's one in Yak, there's one in Yakima, there's one in the Tri-Cities and there's one in Portland. Depending on, most of these guys live on the west side, so they go to Portland.
Or Van. Down there by Costco, really?
Yeah. And so there's still, if they're willing to come up with the money and pay, that's usually a good sign. And they're required to do it in six months because it's a union position and they have to have a CDL. So they have six months to get. The training.
What is the, the hourly rate? You're saying they're, they're washing out because they can make the same amount of money somewhere else. What are we paying for that entry level rate?
It's about twenty-three dollars an hour.
Is that the rate after they come back and have a CDL and everything else, or do they bump into a higher category once?
Well, the way it works in road is it's a. We have, and it's the union contract, within eighteen months, they hit the maximum. There's a three step process. So after six months, they get a raise. After twelve months, they get a raise. And then after eighteen months, they get their fine.
What's the final number, do you know?
I think it's around twenty-five dollars an hour.
They start at twenty-three and at twenty-five?
Yeah, so something similar to that. I don't know the exact numbers, but I think that's close.
So they're signing up for a job knowing that they gotta pay eleven thousand dollars for school?
Yeah, there's, there's ways that the last guy we talked to wasn't gonna pay that much. There's, there's, yeah, they can get grants. And there's other things they can do, scholarships and things like that. I think the last person was gonna pay through. For the school, but there, there's definitely. Uh, you know, it's, it's something for them, you know, we're not gonna pay for that.
Well, yeah, unless they sign a five year contract with the county. I'll pay it after five years, maybe. I'm not gonna pay you for your school and have you leaving two months to go drive truck somewhere else.
Yeah, we're kinda hesitant about doing that because of the state is now looking at trying to do away with some of those. Contracts that hold people to a job. Said it's just not fair. Cause Amazon and some of those companies do that. They make them sign these employee contracts. And now this, I know they're talking about it. I've heard that. We've heard it through. So if they do.
Eleven, eleven thousand, if you had to pay eleven thousand dollars to get a twenty-three dollar an hour job, that, that's a pretty big.
It's a pretty big hit.
It's a pretty big chunk of change for a twenty-three dollar.
Nothing compared to getting a four year degree and still only making twenty-three thousand dollars and being a hundred and fifty thousand in the hole. So it's actually pretty darn cheap when you think of education costs.
Yes.
Yeah, well. Depends on what you go to school for. If you just went to school for underwater basket weaving, you're probably gonna work at Subway.
Can we move on?
Yes, I think that's all we have. We got. Anything for us?
I don't have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you later. Hi Sharon. Sharon Carter from Senior Services.
While she walks up here, I would make a motion to approve pay estimate number two for the twenty twenty-four annual striping program. RN six four two dash two four in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none?
No, other than I was, should have mentioned when Jeff was here, I saw some new white plastic edgeline on Centerville Highway in the curvy windy section. And I thought, very nice. I keep people on their own.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
God, remembering that, I'd already forgot.
We tend to just move on, huh? Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning. So, um. Our application was submitted to um, the consolidated grant program with Washington State Department of Transportation for the connector. Route service, um, to connect our uh, fixed route that runs between Golden Dale and the Dells and the one White Salmon to Hood River. To connect through Lyle and that match is going to be provided by MACAD. They provided a, a letter of the commitment of match funds. So I will be um. Addressing an MOU uh, at further meeting, at a further meeting for that. Um, and then just uh, Columbia Area Transit. They also applied, uh, they did a year round request um, for this updated consolidated grant program. You know, they've. Been doing weekend uh, service for the White Salmon Hood River uh, fixed route. On the last two summers and uh, there was a request to have that. Year round uh, service. And so they did apply. And the cities of Benjen and White Salmon are providing the match for that service. Um, so that will, if they get awarded that funding, that'll provide actually seven day a week service between. Uh, White Salmon, Benjen and Hood River. Uh, and that would uh, in our, we'll find out in. By June for a July start date for the next biennium. And that's when we'll also fi- find out about the Lyle Connector out. But I was, I get it, it was inundated with letters of support um, to provide with our application. For that and a lot of really uh, positive feedback. So we're, we're hopeful we'll be able to. Uh, start that service in uh, fall of next year. So we'll, we'll know more in the spring. Um. Uh, typically that has to follow what, you know, we just don't know in terms of what potential changes to funding could happen with, you know, the election. Uh, we're how, we'll have new governor as well as uh, yeah, uh, new president. And you know, the, the funding sources for these, you know, for a number of our, our grants could change. We just gonna have to wait and see. Um, and I just, I provided just a graph again, an update of um, this is the fixed route service. Uh, for both, um, it has the Golden Dale and the White Salmon uh, route ridership. Uh, for each month from when we started the service. And then obviously the, the, the zeros were during uh, COVID. When we had a shutdown. Uh, but our latest uh, for August was we had six hundred and five. Uh, for Golden Dale and six hundred and fifty-five um, trips for White Salmon. So, so we're continuing to see and steady ridership.
I was gonna say, it looks kinda like it's consistent.
Yeah, I mean, there are some kind of offsets um, slight, but we definitely have, you know, our drivers are, have, you know, kind of regular people. That are riding and, and again.
Which is nice.
What we expect when. There's consistency with the service and that too, and people get familiar with the schedules and, and there has been outreach. Um, that's been provided, you know, in part with the Eve Everwell, who's been um, who's the travel trainer. For the Washington side on contract. She's been doing, you know, a lot of outreach in Clickatet and Skamani Counties. Um, and helping people uh. And helping people uh, you know, actually. Go on trips to to get comfortable and and especially addressing some of those with special needs folks um. Uh, to to encourage, you know, access for that. So we're seeing um more improvement there.
So clarification, when it says, uh, say August and six hundred and fifty-five. Essentially, that just means six hundred and fifty-five people boarded your bus for that.
There were that many boardings? I, we don't say like there's six hundred and fifty-five individuals. That could be repeat.
That would be, so if somebody rode it from Goldendale to the Dells and then got back on it in the Dells and came to Goldendale, that's two boardings.
Two, yeah. It's all, this is all boardings.
Right, right, okay. I'm just trying to do the math and.
That's about forty boardings per day.
Twenty-one point eight.
I did both. I did, I added them together.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know. I just did it per route.
And we're just, you know, we're using again, our our vehicles are fourteen passengers or less, you know, that we're not, we're not, we don't have like a big twenty-five passenger bus. We have small cutaways um uh in.
How many trips a day do you? Leaving Goldendale to go to the Dells?
But there's four round trips for Goldendale.
So there's four different times people are leaving. So if there's twenty-one people that board going to the Dells. That's over the period of four bus trips going to the Dells.
So we got basically four circuits we're doing. We've got four round trips between Goldendale and the Dells. And then on the west end, we've got, we're able to do nine because it's a shorter distance.
I'm just, like I said, I was just trying to do the math. So Goldendale number turns out to be twenty individuals. You're running four trips over there. That's an average of five people per bus. That's the math in my head, so I was just trying to get a more holistic.
Yeah.
Do um, how full the buses are?
So how many stops total?
Leave here and stop somewhere on the way?
Yeah, there's multiple, you know, they go, uh, here is one of the main stops, you know, the um, and then. They do World War Two Park. There's, we have a stop up by the City Hall and the church. Um, so for people that are going to like D S H S office too. So we end over by the hospital. So we have several stops along the way. And then in in the Dells, we. Used to have more stops. We limited those, you know, the idea was, you know, all the fixed services have really been. Developing in the gorge. I mean, it's, there weren't, there wasn't anything. Uh, actually, Skamani County was the first one that actually had any fixed route service and that was their service that went into uh Vancouver. Um, and then uh it's been gradually with each of the different uh. Counties and cities or towns they're doing. So like in the Dells, um, they have. Fixed route service. So when they started, when we started, they didn't have fixed routes, so we had several. Multiple, number, quite a few more stops to do in the Dells to get people to areas. Now we've limited that to primarily. The um Transit Center, uh, the Goodwill and Downtown. Because we figure people can get on link and connect and get around. The the Dells on that bus. And then the idea is they can also at the Transit Center. They can access Greyhound bus and also the bus to go to Hood River. Um. And then in same with the west end route, we used to do a lot of stops in Hood River, you know, go up in the heights. Now we don't, we just basically hit um. A downtown stop and the CAT Transit Center and Walmart and then. People connect on that to get up to the heights and around and obviously to to Portland and that too. And then on the Washington side, we're connecting with um Skamani County Transit connects with us at the bridge, the base of the bridge. So people can actually get on and they drive, they ride into Skamani County and into Vancouver. So um, we have people and and um, uh, number of people even uh that they enter, they've done some interviews with some passengers and people to get feedback on the route and. Uh, some people in Goldendale that are, you know, using the bus service to go to the airport, so they don't leave their car there. They're traveling. And going to visit family and they can take, you can actually get the bus all the way down.
Have you did any, um, have you done any uh age studies of ridership?
Any what?
Age studies?
Age, um, so we don't, um, we haven't gathered any data. Specifically on the part, you know, we have a lot of data on our dialeride service, you know, because we have people register for that. With the fixed route, we just.
See, that would be the only question I have is fixed route of these uh under.
It's a.
Retirement age or over retirement age?
It's a mix. The fixed route is very much a mix and I'll say, um, and. We did presentations, we've done a presentation, we were asked to do like Bingen and White Salmon. City councils wanted a presentation kind of to talk about gorge transit. Um, so Kathy Fitzpatrick, who's our mobility manager with M C A D and then Emily, um, who's with the Gorge Tourism and is also a consultant. On doing marketing and advertising for Gorge Transit under a grant uh that M C A D has. Um. They, we, they, uh, and then Amy actually with CAT Columbia Area Transit came also and we did a presentation at Bingen and White Salmon. Uh, city councils and we actually, at the White Salmon one, there were four seniors that came to that meeting just to express. How much they appreciate the fixed route, that they knew, you know, that that they had. Several of them had said they'd had kind of an incident where they couldn't drive for a period and they. And they enjoyed it so much, they're just keeping writing because it's. More cost-effective. They feel like, you know, they're saving on gas and that too, so. Think with the Gorge Pass and I know from Goldendale, we have a number of seniors that have bought the Gorge Pass, which um, you know, for forty bucks, you can ride. A whole year uh unlimited on all the fixed route services throughout the gorge, so. Um, that's, they can, basically they just transfer bus to bus and that.
If you could stand being on a bus that long, it would pay at the airport because, yeah, like my last parking was three hundred bucks.
Yeah, yeah. So actually, you know, you take, you, a pass, uh, gorge pass is forty bucks and it's good for a full three hundred and sixty-five. Days. It's from the time you purchase it, it's good. For a year. The only cost, additional cost to that, somebody would have is transitioning to like the Max train, because. The our our, the Columbia Gorge Express connects to the Gateway Transit Center and then from there, people have to catch uh. The. Max to go to the airport. But there's a number of people doing it. It's a lot cheaper too than these different services. We used to get a lot of calls for. Rides to the airport and we had explained that that was a service we could provide, but. A lot of the airport or shuttles and that too, it was easily several hundred dollars to do a ride, so. So we did um presentations to each of the, and and Goldendale City Council was the the most recent, just to kind of talk about um. Trans transit and the gorge and how much has been developed. In terms of fixed route in the past and access and we've had a lot of really good feedback um. From that and then um, the the plan is to, in the new year also to get. On the agenda with the the different, with the Board of County Commissioners to come and do. An update with transit and also um, there is a plan to do a a trans, a gorge transit summit in um Hood River. Is where they plan to host it at um in the spring and I think they're looking at tying it to when there's, there's like another tourism. Uh, summit that's going on and thinking that might go coincide well with a lot of the other um uh. Folks, because it's it's partnering and and being aware of um other, you know, people that are biking and. Using other modes of transportation and and ways that people can get around and. Uh, there was uh. A a lot of focus too has been on making sure uh for accessibility uh for folks uh. Uh, with riding the services and getting around town. So that's uh on transportation. Um, uh, I don't know if you have any other questions related to um. And we're we're continuing to um have, you know, a high demand for dialeride service. Um. And, you know, unfortunately, again, a lot of people that have to travel. Out of the area to specialists um. Uh, for uh Portland, Vancouver, Tri-Cities and Yakima, so. Uh, and then for personnel updates. Um, so. I know when I had updated um last quarter in June, um, you know, the our volunteer coordinator had been. Out on medical leave and he actually had resigned uh at the end of June due to medical. Reasons and um because, you know, our our funding was only through the Adsw- Adswah had a grant. That provided for the volunteer coordinator position was only through the end of uh this year. And I haven't been able to secure other funding, then I, it doesn't make sense to. Fill that position for uh a few months, so uh myself and Norma Pickett, my operations manager have been. Uh, you know, trying to field calls for that and and onboarding volunteers that we have because we always, you know. Have a need, a strong volunteer base for all of our programs. Um, but it is um challenging because, you know, we have uh a lot of uh requests and that for, you know, like. Uh, with the community cleanups and that that were going on, that was having that person. Uh, a coordinator that can actually supervise um. Teams of volunteers to go out and do some of those things and and then we're also getting a lot of requests for wood. And the volunteer coordinator was able to go out and kind of assist with that and I don't, I don't have the capacity with that with existing staff, so. Um, so I'm continuing to look for grant opportunities. Um. Uh, but would probably look at, rather than it being an employee position, is maybe look at it at some kind of contract. Uh, position because again, the grants are gonna be. For a limited duration, it's gonna be kind of that constant. Following for.
Yeah, my monthly meeting with them is Friday. Uh-huh. So we can have that conversation too and see if anybody else has other ideas for you maybe.
Yeah, and so, I mean, and there's, I was looking at, you know, Community Care Corps grants, uh, some of the federal ones. Unfortunately, are pretty administratively burdensome and I have to be able to manage it and um. So that that's been a challenge is finding something that isn't gonna be. Uh, a whole other job.
To bury you.
Yeah, so um, so continuing to look and and um, and and Adswah. You know, they're unfortunately, their discretionary grant opportunity, they were clear that that was only gonna be for new projects. Um, I'm not really. So they did that initial uh funding, because I know they also funded a a palliative care program initially with K V H, but they were, they had told us that wasn't something we could apply for ongoing funding for, so. Uh, so unfortunately, we're. It's a very needed position in terms of um, because we have a lot of people willing and and able to volunteer, but you do need to have. Somebody that can kind of man, it's a whole. Other piece of managing that and coordinating. Um, so. So I'll continue to look um for support for that. And then um, personnel-wise, I do have, I just, we just received a another, a notice of retirement for another full-time driver. This person's in White Salmon, so. Uh, he's not effective the end of December. So giving us some time to hopefully recruit, we're still trying to fill a part-time position in White Salmon and um. Uh, you know, pay is a struggle. Uh, because I know even with our wage comparisons that we did with other counties, we were. Clearly below and we did up a grade, but that was told that we couldn't, that we're still under substantially. Even with non-C D L uh drivers and so uh we're continuing to draw and and. Do have uh probably two more retirements that'll be happening in twenty twenty-five, but we'll continue to try to. To replace those. So though that is one that I'll be, you know, wanting approval to advertise to fill for that uh full-time driver, because it may take us a little bit of time to get applications with a December uh date. And then I also have um got a verbal notice from Norma Pickett, who's my operations manager, that she is planning to retire in February of twenty twenty-five. Potentially could be sooner, um, because she did put her house on the market, is looking to. Go to warmer climate. Uh, so um, this position though is one that. I have to have. I I can't.
Yeah.
And for me to function, uh, because I have to have somebody that can do um uh management of staff and that and support as well as compliance. For our grants and uh programs when I'm absent. Um. And so, uh, but I do need to update the job description because we did not do an update, you know, when we eliminated our home care agency. We did eliminate the other, we had two operations manager positions at the time, one on the west end, one on the east end. We ended home care, we eliminated one of the operations manager positions. And the existing one floats between both offices and has. More of um, you know, the transportation over both offices and that direct oversight and training and. Management for all of our our drivers, which we have a lot of compliance. Uh, and training that has to go ongoing uh to be uh compliant with our grants and contracts and then. Um, as well as management oversight of the other uh staff positions again in my absence, so we. We work alternate days at each location, but there's still items referencing the home care. Services and and a requirement that the person have home care experience, so. I do need to update that job description and I'll work with um H R regarding that update. And then we'll be submitting a request for um uh. Looking at replacing that. I do have uh a couple of internal. Uh, candidates, potentially a couple of staff internally that have indicated um an interest in applying for the position as well, so. Um, and then uh I did have a lot of concern um expressed from uh my case management staff regarding the email that went out about the. Exempt, non-exempt uh positions and so um. One of the items, I guess, and I I I'd sent an email, you know, to to H R, you know, asking kind of how. How that works with people in the same. Same classification, you know, the job description, say it's a exempt, so for like case manager exempt position, but I have. A newer case manager who's been here a couple of years, so they're gonna actually fall, and then a case manager that's been here for a number of years. So how do I have one that's exempt and one that's not exempt in the same position? Um, and then uh, one of the things I had asked Adswah about specifically was how. Their pay works because um, the case manager that I have that's in the, would end up. Not being eligible for the exempt position or whatever. Um. Had expressed that it's not even necessarily the the overtime issue, it's the salary um piece that is appealing with the job is that. Not having a pay period that has maybe ten days on it and another one that has twelve, having that consistency. With a paycheck is appealing for. Um, kind of a salaried position and so um, when I'd asked Mike Riordan at Adswah, he said all their case managers and the ones with the state that they do comparison with. Um, they pay them salaried, but they are. Non-exempt, so anything over forty is overtime. But they're in a salary structure and I wasn't sure if that was anything that's been discussed. With the county about having that opportunity for those, because again, it seems odd to to have. Everybody in the same thing and I have one that would be exempt and whatnot. I don't know how. How that works. It's kind of an odd.
Two people doing the same job with one person exempt and the other one.
Right, just because they're newer versus longer term and so it seems like, you know. Right, just because they're newer versus longer term and so it seems like, you know, and then. Obviously, the job descriptions have them as exempt, so then that has to be rebound, but I thought, well. One of the things, you know, is if, you know, we often look to, because that is a service that, you know, that case management. Program in terms of where we would compete for employees from would be other state positions and that too. And, and Mike said that's kind of how they operate their. Their salary, but their. Non-exempt, so anything over forty is overtime, but they're also a s- a salaried and that seems to be.
We'd have to ask that question.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring that up because that, I, you know, I could end up having some issues with having to replace more.
I think everybody's having issues, yeah, this is a tough one.
And then it, that was, and then also with the operations manager position. That's, um, I think, uh. When I look at where that's right, you know, again, cause Norma's been here, um. Eighteen years, uh, the newer position, I think they would fall off, at least not in this upcoming year, but later, so.
Well, the solution to that is to tell Norma she's not allowed to retire. And I'm for one in favor of that, so. And that we prefer that she not retire.
No, everybody, you know, Heather getting, people are retiring and we have.
Do, were you listening and you have comments about exempt, non-exempt or no, okay, I won't ask you. Okay, oh yeah, she's doing an update, no, I thought maybe she, sometimes people listen and they.
Non-exempt is a whole HR thing, that hopefully. There will be more detailed conversation, cause the board does need to figure that out. Because that exempt does break in the middle of a step.
Yeah, and it was, I initially thought the email just went to the department heads and, and electeds. To kind of have discussion potential, but it went every, cause then I had staff coming and saying, what is, I'm like, oh.
I'm sorry.
So I did, you know, I emailed some communication about that and I don't know if there's gonna be, you know, a, a workshop or something. Plan to discuss some of that or give.
I don't know either, but I would certainly help some.
But just as, uh, yeah, it's just something in terms of that's come up as an issue within my department. And one of the things was checking with, with Adswan, kind of how they manage that and. And they apparently do the same with the social workers that run in the same level with. DSHS and. Oh, my community services, which would be. Our competition for. Employees.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, it's on, it's on our radar. We're all gonna have to figure it out.
Okay.
But thank you for checking with Adswad and with Mike, that's a suggestion maybe. Good, any questions?
I'd just like to say, um, looking at your numbers from August of twenty-four to August of twenty-three. And August of twenty-two, it's nice to see that, uh, the Golden Dale numbers have come up. And when I was running the numbers, it'd be about five people per bus is starting to make a pencil out a little bit better in my mind.
Well, and it, it takes time to establish and unfortunately with, with the pandemic and our shutdown. It was like we were starting back from scratch again, because you've got to get that consistency.
Well, and that's, I think everybody jumped off the bus and got on dial-a-ride and so it's a matter of. It's, it's much easier to call your personal taxi to dive your places, so hopefully we've encouraged them to get back on the bus.
And yeah, and then, and it would be though, that not everybody would have been eligible to just jump. Dial-a-ride either too with that, because there are, you know, more criteria, whereas the bus, you know. There could be any number of things that people are wanting, you know, to access or do, uh, for transportation, but I think. And there will be improvements as there's more access to additional transportation, um. Ideally, you know, the issue, you know, it's still a lot of wait time between buses since we can only go. You know, for circuits, but it's, it's better than nothing, which was available before.
Is it the same driver literally going back and forth four times, or do you have?
Because we run from seven AM to seven PM, um, we're not finishing up really until. You got before seven, about six thirty AM to more like seven thirty PM with the bus. Cleaning and closing, you know, and shutting down and everything, so we have two, there's an AM shift and then a, and a PM shift.
How many of your employees would you say that are currently exempt, um, are put in overtime?
How many put in overtime consistently, well, and I only have. I, there's only four exempt positions in my department, which are the two case managers. And then myself and Norma. And I would say, uh, overtime would be primarily myself and Norma. Uh, the case managers, uh, maybe on a rare, but not, shouldn't be anymore because of, um. Uh, we had expanded those positions, they were actually part-time. Exempt positions before, but they, uh, with the caseload increase and the money that we're getting, those are actually.
Okay.
Uh, positions, so.
Yeah, do you have any more questions?
Okay.
Great, thank you. About four minutes. Keep ourselves on time.
Well, here's a, uh. Topic for. The guy shaking his head in the back of the room. Um, we discussed, uh, first aid CPR training and facilitating that and getting it on the calendar this year for staff. So that hopefully in future years it can be done. I don't recall. I saw the directive from the board was to have Rob. Or HR, could be Casey, uh, arrange that and set it up, but. I don't know that that's the directive that they heard or have ever been told, so before I did that. I wanted to make sure that that's who you wanted doing that and not, uh, like. Emergency management or somebody.
I heard from Jeff last week that. There is a, a committee? That actually handles some of that?
We have a safety committee.
Yeah, do they do that?
No.
Okay, the only thing I would, I would ask is that maybe staff look into it, because it's gonna cost. We're gonna, I.
Okay, I'm hoping you're not gonna say because it costs ten grand or something.
No, I'm not saying that, but we need to know, because there's different companies that charge different things and we need to search out a good.
I wholeheartedly can agree with that.
Unless there's somebody that can do it voluntarily.
But it was a message that we need to advise. Someone. A name to look into it and get back to us with the price and availability of doing so. Who is that individual we want to task with the price and availability of doing so?
Well, you said EMS and I was wondering if EMS does any of these trainings?
Um, I can tell you that there are the fire halls do them and things like that, but you only have like one or two dummies. Not enough to do a thirty-person classroom full of dummies, sorry, not that the people doing the test would be the dummies, but the.
Professional companies that come in.
Uh, you're gonna have to have somebody that is, uh, used to doing larger rooms. Um, in multiple days of larger rooms to get this accomplished.
Is your goal to have everyone, is this a required or is this a ask?
I, I think it would be wise. That we have at least one person in every department required, but I also would like to leave it open. For anybody else in that department that, that wants it, um, it's. It's something that saves lives and, and I don't know that you can put a cost on that. And, and I can look at that as a benefit to our employees and their families by providing it, just like we provide lifeline insurance.
Come on, Casey.
And Sharon has.
Yeah. Yeah.
And she can sign your cards and.
Yeah, we have to pay for materials and.
Yeah.
We have the dummies.
Oh, wow. Casey, what do you have?
So in the past, we have had, uh, Rural Seven provide their training dates. And employees have been able to go to Rural Seven.
Okay.
On the dates that they have provided to either get their first aid card or renew it. And then we have also provided, uh, training here for our employees, so we have done both.
Oh, good.
So it's just a matter of checking in with Rural Seven and providing the dates for the employees and then.
Did Rural Seven come here and provide the training then?
Done both, mhm.
Well, that's good.
And so I think the most recent was them coming and doing the training here.
When was that, is this something I haven't heard of?
It was last year. And then other times they've had the training there and so then employees are able to go there. To either, uh, renew their first aid training or get their first aid training, um, cards. And then they just invoice the county or the department.
Have we done anything on the west end?
Not that, no.
Okay.
It's only through Rural Seven that I have done.
Well, we might wanna reach out maybe to the new fire authority and when they're doing theirs, hopefully get an open invitation to our employees on the west side.
Okay.
So what I'm asking for is for the board to pick a person. That we can ask to update us every so often as to how this is going. Right now, we haven't picked a person, so it's just off in limbo land.
Have you done it in the past consistently, has that been, yeah, well, then I vote, we leave it with Casey.
As well, and just give us an update on, and I like Jake's idea that the west side needs to be involved in this.
I will reach out to them.
Thank you, Casey.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Van Cleve.
I think Heather was trying to get my attention and say she'd do it. Apparently I was mistaken. Man, rough crowd.
Good morning. Um, just a couple of things on the jail update this morning, the hiring process for the new jail administrator is proceeding as planned. Um, all good news and, and moving forward, um, because this is an executive level position. The firm doing the background automatically expedites it, so, and I've asked him this morning for, um, what that looks like. And what that means in this case based on, uh, the. Specific background of this individual, so I can get a better date. Um, the other thing is there's a lot of rumors, a lot of chit-chat, and I get asked a lot of questions about the. Actual transfer date of the jail from the sheriff to the commissioners to the new department of corrections. It has not been discussed by this body, no date has been set and I've not recommended one yet. And, um, when I bring that forward, then the commissioners can pick that date for that transfer. But, um, the transfer of the jail, there is no date set yet, nor any conversation between me and the three of you about that. Um, I doubt that will stop the chit-chat, but, um, facts sometimes matter. And, um, at follow-up to last week, I'm working on purchasing the, uh, items from the WCRP grant, the five thousand dollar risk reduction grant. Um, so I hope to have that wrapped up this week and get those items ordered so we can get reimbursed by the pool. So, um. I think that's about it for this week.
When you do come with a date, well, there, and this is to help with the rumors, they should be two weeks or so, um. Lead time, so everybody knows, right?
Yeah, I'm assuming, yeah, I mean, I, like I say, we haven't set a date yet, um. Um, I think everybody, I mean, you've made the decision to do it, it's just when you're going to do it, so, yeah, I suspect. We'll try and align, um, everything up, so it makes sense.
And have you done a review, we had a multiple comment, well, at least one comment this morning about the, the jail and the posse that was working in the jail. That's no longer gonna be available, have you done any research into that to see, it did, was the posse working in the jail? And if so, um, were they doing basic functions or is that something we're going to need to, to budget for?
The only thing that I'm aware of, um, is that the posse has, uh, I think one, uh, one of them testified in front of you that they were on, um.
It's a side watch.
Yeah, a medical watch, I think it was actually, and, um, they may be transporting, um, inmates to the courts. And I think occasionally they participated in transporting to mental health facilities and, and, um, other detention facilities. I'm not aware of.
And I would, I would add that occasionally you might see a posse, uh, be the third person on a shift if they could not. Uh, call in somebody for overtime and they would just be confined to control ward. And I, and I'm not. Find that, I'm not saying it happened.
And I'm not aware that.
You might.
And sometimes the posse mans the front desk or the reception area, there's a person.
That's not.
And the sheriff's.
That's our sheriff.
Yeah, so that's, that's all I'm aware of, um. That I can speak to.
So you're, you're not estimating that there would likely be additional, um, positions needed because of the posse?
I've asked, um, I've asked Jose to provide a recommendation on staffing for the jail as part of what he's doing. And he's working on it right now, I'm asking both, um, his recommendation on, uh, corrections officers, correction staff, command staff. And medical staff, and he said he's working on that, so.
You're gonna have to figure something out for transport to West District, now that we have to West District. So you're not gonna pull two of the three corrections off the floor to go transport to West District all day and just run the jail with one person. So. Something's gonna.
It'll all come. Just work through the process.
But.
It'd be nice to figure that out before we assume control of the jail, uh, versus after.
Oh, hopefully the, Jose will have recommendations for that and we can move forward with those recommendations at that time. But I, I agree, the more we can know about ahead of time, the better off we're gonna be.
I think the transition plan is probably seventy or eighty items, so we know more than we did six months ago and we continue to learn and. Continue to get information and so. Will we have it all by then? I seriously doubt it, will we have a considerable amount of information? Yes. Um, it's what we don't know that I'm trying to eliminate as, as much as possible, so. And I think we've learned a lot, we've learned a lot, so. That's it for me. Any questions?
Not for me.
Have you, have you had a, a statement from the sheriff that he would not allow posse to any longer help out in the. The jail or with transports or anything?
I've not had that discussion with the sheriff.
Okay.
I don't know.
I had a question, but it wasn't related to him, it was something I was gonna pass on to you guys. That I heard in the sheriff town hall, but I don't remember what it was, it'll come to me again and I'll let you know.
Which is probably just as well. Okay. Think we're done with that, where are we now, Heather? Heather and Craig, it looks like. Good morning.
Good morning. Um. I think we have a dual, uh, finance committee and. Uh, system updates, I'll go with the finance committee update, which is fairly short. Um, we did have a finance committee meeting on Friday, um, we were missing Lori, Lori wasn't able to make it, so it was pretty short. Um, we basically talked about the regional fire authority, um, and the, just that we're moving forward with that. So we're setting up the bars numbers and we're working on, Billy's working on the levees, so there's work going on with that, so we have to get the. Um, fund set up and everything, so that's, um, one of the things I wanted to talk about Heather and I covered. Um, and then we did just, oops, talk about, um, some. Talk about the budget, but not really in any greater length than we did on Thursday, so, um, we just had a, a visit about just different things that we had talked about. So, um, and it was over pretty shortly, so, uh, the next meeting is the eighteenth at nine AM.
Thank you.
That's all I really had.
Any questions on finance committee before we move on to the finance system?
A whole lot to question there.
So Commissioner Anderson had asked for an update on where we are, um, with the finance system upgrade, we did talk about. Uh, most of it, I think, on Thursday. Uh, most of it, I think, on Thursday during the budget workshop, but just to recap. Um, we are about six months behind where we had hoped we'd be. I think we set a lofty uh, goal for ourselves and we're probably overly optimistic in the, the timeline that we originally set out. Uh, we've run into some technical challenges, we are shifting from an onsite um, server to a cloud-based program. So there's.
And to note, we're moving from an onsite Oracle server to an on-cloud SQL server. So we're converting two different languages, which I think is kind of helping us or not helping, but taking some time.
Yeah, that's all.
It is, but I think it's important because I mean, I think it's not like we can just move data from one to the other and that's some of the pieces that we're continuing to work through. Is the two different.
Yeah, but with their, I mean, we're staying with the same company, so they're used to doing this from one of their softwares to another.
They, they are, yes, but I'm just saying those are just additional pieces that we're changing as we're putting, bringing on this new software.
That server crash that we had not too long ago um, really derailed us as well, that we're having to redo the, the tunnel.
The VPN though.
Yeah, I don't exactly understand what that means, I just know that that's something we're having to do. Um, so that's another hiccup and you know, most things. Um, I said, people have heard me say all the time, things take longer than they take. So we're, we're in that status. We have also decided to rewrite our entire uh, general ledger. And that has been a monumental task. Um, we are changing the structure of bars numbers, we're getting rid of bars numbers that are no longer in use. We are correcting ones that are incorrect. Um, we are cleaning up departments and earnings codes and deduction codes. I mean, we're just going through every piece of our system and fixing things that should have been fixed. As we were moving along that we're now.
So I know when we were originally talking about it, a lot was efficiency and changes and process improvements. Can you speak to the process improvements?
We haven't necessarily gotten there yet, um, because we haven't started testing and there are some significant changes in the way that we will do things. Um, payroll, for example, we're going to um, electronic time and attendance. That necessitates changing our processes, but until we get into the testing phase. And actually have some concept of what that looks like for us, we can't really redefine a process other than that we. Recognize we have to change our process. Does that make sense?
But the way that we process bills and everything else, the way it's been done is gonna be kind of the same way, there's not really any changes there.
With the AP, we anticipate um, changes there that moving the county to the, the purchasing order process. So that we can track encumbrances before um, they're actually spent. It's one of the problems we've run into now is until AP comes up to actually get paid. Um, that's when we become aware of it and not that it's been encumbered, so we're, we're trying to create a process that allows us. To actually track money as it moves through the system. Okay.
Would departments or offices be able to use that same encumbered look when they look at their budget? Or would that be an internal of that department to set up their, their budget that way? We, we have some departments that spend a little too much and then say whoops, so my point is if they had a. Set it up that way, they may be able to get a, a better understanding of what they currently.
If it's in, if it's in the system. If it's in the system, then yes, because you can pull reports based on, you know, things that have been entered, things that have been approved. Um, we could do that now, we're just not utilizing the system to get it in there ahead of time. It's more of an after the fact, so like anything on a credit card purchase isn't done with a PO, it doesn't go into the system and says. You know, Heather just bought five hundred dollars worth of paper. It's when I go to pay my Visa bill, Heather bought five hundred dollars worth of paper. It's, so it's, it's about changing the process and the, the order, but again, until we start testing that process. Um, we don't entirely know what the process is changing to, we just know what it's changing from.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Easy, thank you.
I did remember what I was gonna ask you guys about if you uh, transition back to the jail conversation. Um, there was conversation about the uh, wristbands, the, the health monitoring wristband things for the jail. That I know when we originally looked into, there were some questions on concrete walls and feasibility and. Um, but that was also when we were looking at that or at least discussing that, that was when the, we were transferring to Norcore. So let's not spend a bunch of money trying to get IT to work in the jail when we're closing the jail anyway. Uh, but now that it seems like the direction is not to close the jail, I, I, rather than waiting another two weeks or two months or whatever. I think it would benefit us to get ahead of the curve and maybe direct IT to reexamine that option. And at least let us know what it would cost to do that. Because I'm gonna come out with a wild guess and say that's gonna be a recommendation given to us when we get our list of recommendations. So we might want to know the IT side of it. Beforehand.
And I'd heard something about some of this, that some of it had been explored, but I can't bring it back to my memory. I believe it may have been Rob, um, would you see if he's available, if he'd like to? Or do you have to walk down there? Can we buzz him or?
Well, the, the answer was some of the jail gets internet and some of the jail doesn't.
Well, I think it went beyond that, that there was some things that they had found when they were looking at some things and we had new information, I think. About this and about the money to purchase.
I know where that.
Yeah.
I've received any information.
Yeah, it's something went by me, I heard something somewhere, but I don't.
Yes, I mean, you, you can get wonderful internet in every room of that jail, it's just a matter of how much money. So it's, it, I believe the monitors can be used, it's just a matter of how many.
So I personally think that that's gonna be a discussion and decision for the jail commander. Um, for when they get here, because they might want to do something different. And so if we have the money and that money's still available, I would prefer to let that person give us a recommendation that may, may or may not be part of Jose's recommendations.
Did you get caught between all of this? Did you hear it?
We're talking about the wristband or the uh?
Well, my, my recommendation was to not say yes or no, but to have IT do a. Analysis on what it would cost to make the thing work, so we can at least uh, plug that into our budget or have that knowledge available. When the new commander comes online, um, because I, it's gonna be enough, it's gonna be a question. It's just a matter of, do we just wait and address that question a month from now, or can we get ahead of the curve? And, and have the answer to the question when it does come up.
So I can, um, the last time I saw Jose, he mentioned that um. I believe he's supportive of that type technology and they may use it. But he said that it's not wireless, it's hardwired, which would be easier for us. Uh, because jails are notoriously difficult with wireless systems because of the concrete and steel. So I will follow up on that to see, so that uh, uh, so IT may not have to do. Uh, a whole lot of work on expanding the wifi system, but just so you know, I, the twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Whatever you want to call it, uh, it's still set aside and it's no expiration date on that, so it's not like we have to have it expanded by the end of this week. Or the end of the year, they want all twenty-four counties in their system to have this technology, so. So the money's been set aside by the Board of Directors, of which Commissioner Christopher's on.
Right, but I guess my point is, is I hate kicking cans down roads, I hate um. Let's just address it next month, because I don't know if everybody's aware, but I've heard rumors that there's been two more suicide attempts in the jail. If, if we can preemptively do some work, it might allow us to. If this is an option, put the option in two weeks sooner than we were going to do it, because we've already preemptively done work. And then does that actually save lives? Maybe. Um, and since that was the purpose, I think, I could be wrong, that is the new purpose of the reason why we took the jail was to save lives. I think it doesn't make any sense to me to not preempt.
I think the first step with the commission's um, support is to have Randy uh, make contact with the company. Providing this technology to find out what the IT needs are and then IT can determine if we have it, don't have it.
Right, that's all I'm asking.
Perfect.
Is do the legwork ahead of time, so we have the answers when we get to, when we're ready to make a decision, we actually have the answers. We don't have to wait another two weeks to get the answers, that's all I'm asking for.
There was also conversation about using, um, I think their uh, monitors, uh, different types of monitors for transports. And that was kind of a if there, and now that we're transporting to West District and we're transporting all the way across the state. Um, and it seems like we could do one or the other, uh, do, it would be nice to have a recommendation on which one's more important and which one we need.
I think.
I, I, from my understanding, from talking to the people that are doing the transports and the management of them. They're not worried about somebody committing suicide while handcuffed in the back of a squad car.
It's. More than just suicide, these are health issues. Uh, these are people that come into the facility that have um, uh, uh, chronic or, or um. Are symptomatic, not.
And they haven't had healthcare.
Right. So I, I think it's a separate uh, issue and or type situation with suicide. Um, and I think last time I checked that there are electronic handcuffs and, and uh. Uh, the, the monitor the certain vital signs, but I think it was either or, we can either spend the twenty-five thousand over here. Or we spend the twenty-five thousand over here. And part of that was if we were gonna go to Norcore at the time and predominantly be a detention facility and transporting constantly. That was better than having it in our facility, so it's a either or, um, but um.
I have not heard from any law enforcement that the monitor to handcuffs would be useful, let's just put it that way.
Well, they may not know.
Law enforcement doesn't know.
I mean, they may not have been trained in, in that, I don't know, I can't speak to that.
And I think with the expertise working on it and the new jail administrator, I think we'll get a lot of those.
Well, the money set aside, the, the IT issues for the handcuffs, it's downloads to their phones, to their smartphones. So that, that's not an issue.
Right, and, and I'm fully in favor of having IT look into it, because if it's hardwired, that could be a very expensive cost. In order to get that through those walls so that you could, because no matter what, it's still wireless.
Yeah, typically, my understanding, not a corrections expert by any means. Um, but I think on the Norcore tour, they use it in the holding facilities before they're entered into the general population. So it monitors the health before they get them fully integrated and assessed.
Right, and my understanding from talking to other counties, they do use it in the holding cells, but they also have a. Call it a suicide wing, um, you know, where they have four or five cells set aside for anybody that. They feel might be or anybody that came up with an evaluation of at-risk or somebody might be coming off of drugs or something. And then those people get stationed in there and then they get pulled out, so I don't know that you're wiring the whole jail. Uh, you're wiring a block uh, or a row of cells and I, I just think it would be something that would behoove us to at least look into what it would take before. You get asked to provide.
Like you're all in agreement to ask IT to, to do that, okay, I'll do that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And sorry, I couldn't remember that, made you walk all the way back down here.
Thanks for eavesdropping. Saves time. Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything.
I don't.
Madam Chair, if there's nothing else before us, I would make a motion to recess for the lunch hour.
Um, so moved?
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move, so move. Uh, good afternoon, uh, welcome back to the Clickatack County Commissioners' regular meeting for September twenty-fourth. Uh, twenty twenty-four and we're gonna begin uh, with a. Uh, Mr. Anderson has had to step out, we have Mr. Christopher and I here uh, with you and Mr. Anderson is stepped out for a few minutes. Um, so the purpose of the meeting is to consider a binding site plan for the first phase of the outdoor luxury camping or glamping facility. The applicant is under canvas, recreational park RV twenty twenty dash one, binding site plan. BSP twenty twenty dash O three, conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty dash thirteen. Applicant and landowner under canvas, Representative Caitlin Cullen. And we'll start with planner's review.
And Caitlin is here if you have questions.
She, she waved at us in the back, yeah.
So we're here to consider the binding site plan for Under Canvas as they propose to build and operate a seasonal outdoor luxury camping. Or glamping facility, the project is located between Housam and Beezy Corner, east of Highway one forty-one. And the White Salmon River, the site is accessed via Oak Ridge Road, which is a county road. And then there's an easement through one parcel into the Under Canvas parcel. The zoning is resource lands and the project is permitted through a conditional use permit. And today, upon approval of the binding site plan by the Board of County Commissioners, the binding site plan will then be filed with the Clickatack County Auditor's Office. And then Under Canvas can then move forward with meeting the construction requirements as specified in the conditional use permit. Upon completion of all the construction and verification that all conditions are met, the board will then uh, issue an operating permit. Which authorizes them to open their business. So there's a short rundown for today, and if you have questions, Scott and I can answer them as well.
Okay.
Then I'll continue, um, I provided some information to you, which some people in the audience have as well, um, and have extra copies. That uh, show the conditions of approval for the Under Canvas, um, laid out by stage in the, in the project. I wanted to make it clear what the purpose is today, as much for the public, as for you, probably more, because I, I think you all understand. This is not proving or denying the Under Canvas project through the hearings examiner and the courts that has already been approved. This is you doing the double check of staff's work to make sure that we've adequately reviewed the binding site plan. So that it meets the um, approved conditional use permit and um, meets the conditions that were included in that. So the conditions, as you see, there's very few that actually are related prior to the binding site plan. The majority are either prior to construction or even more prior to uh, operations. As you can see, there's two pages, there's the front and the back, so as far as things that have to be done prior to the binding site plan, the drinking water system source approval had to, is was required. Which David Kavanaugh, his signature um, was waiting for that, that was one of the final items we were waiting for. Uh, follow all requirements for the binding site plan as described in the subdivision and short plot ordinance, these are primarily procedural. Um, and they have followed those, those procedures, and then the applicant confirmation from the planning department that conditions have been met. That's uh, been a multi-week process at this point, which uh, with the planning department coordinating with all the other departments. Which ultimately resulted in uh, the signatures that you see on the binding site plan from the directors, each of whom um, with their signature. Indicates that their portion of the plan does meet their criteria, so that'd be the other aspect is the actual binding site plan meets criterias, whether it's uh, fire access. Or whatever other aspects, um, the, the water source plan, um, and then different planning requirements. So if we have, like uh, Lori said, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, but again, this is to um, confirm that they have met the requirements for the binding site plan. Not an approval or denial of the project itself.
So on this list of. To sixty-one items here, uh, pretty extensive list, thirty-nine on the front page. Um, are these ones that are completed?
No, these are the, the conditions that were conditions of approval in their um. When the hearings examiner originally proved it, these are the conditions, and then the very top section is stricken or altered by the spirit court. Two of those were stricken, one was altered, um, and then beyond that, these are different stages that they would need to be met. So most of these are not met yet, because much of it is prior to operation, so that'll be part of the, as they do construction, they'll be meeting those. So there's different checkpoints um, for the county, this is one of them, binding site plan to make sure they met the conditions up to this point. A next one is going to be um, building permits, making sure that they meet the conditions up to that point. And then finally, um, the board will be asked at some point to uh, uh, give them an operations permit, which they'll apply for. At that point, we'll be checking to make sure all of. which they'll apply for, and at that point, we'll be checking to make sure all of these are completed. This is going to be turned into a checklist that we'll be using to monitor.
Okay.
Monitor that they're meeting the conditions of approval.
Okay. So the steps ten, forty seven and forty eight are complete.
Yes.
Okay. And does the procedural have to be completed too before the?
No, not necessarily, those are just kind of a catchall for things like that, once the conditional use permit is it's if it's not acted upon twelve months, it expires without extension, so they're just they're they're things that didn't really fit in, something that that under canvas could do.
Okay. Mr. Christopher, do you have questions?
Nope.
Okay. Uh in the other discussion. And uh so I would entertain a motion. Or I can make the motion if you need to.
Well, I will uh tell you that I would not be voting for approval, but I will not be making a motion.
Okay, so I'll step, can I step down to make the motion, is that what I do?
That's procedurally correct.
Procedure, okay, I will step down and make the motion to approve the binding site plan BSP twenty twenty oh three and direct staff, planning staff to file it with the Clickatack County Auditor. But I believe we're going to have to have Mr. Anderson come back in. Because we can't move forward from here, I have to see what my other seatmate wants to do. Is there anything?
I'm not seconding that motion.
Okay.
Wouldn't you like a microphone?
Yes. I I don't know if I was doing that procedurally correct, Rebecca was what you're. Rebecca, do you have?
So Ms. Solar, for the record, did uh Mr. Anderson was stepped out because he had recused himself on this matter. Previously.
I think so, okay.
At this point, I would bring in the doctrine of necessity RCW forty two thirty six oh nine oh, which states in the event of a challenge to a member or members of a decision-making body, which would cause a lack of a quorum or would result in a failure to obtain a majority vote as required by law, any such challenged member shall be permitted to fully participate in the proceedings and vote as though the challenge had not occurred if the member or members publicly disclose the basis for the disqualification prior to rendering this decision, such participation shall not subject the decision to challenge by reason of violation of the appearance of fairness doctrine. So, Mr. Anderson, if you need additional guidance, I can provide it, but in this point, I believe you would disclose your conflict and then move forward with participating then.
Thank you for the heads up. Ah mask, uh what happened while I was out? Um was there a vote?
Lori made a motion and it didn't get seconded.
This is a, tell me if I'm right, this is a procedural that everything that we usually go through and do we have uh the sign off from all of the departments?
Yes, as part of uh my presentation, I spoke about this being a double check, it's not approval or denial of the under canvas um project, it's already been approved. Uh this is checking to make sure that staff has done their work, to make sure the condition's been met and that the binding site plan meets all county requirements and it's been signed by all directors that are required um say signing off on their aspects, saying it has met those those requirements.
And so staff and all of our directors say that this is uh good to move forward uh with the binding site plan.
Yes, the binding site plan meets the criteria of the conditional use permit and all of our other codes.
May I ask why there wasn't a second then?
Um I don't know if we need to clarify that, or if we just need to move forward, it's I think it's Mr. Christopher's prerogative to take his position and we just need as a board to move forward.
Yeah, as usual.
I have always believed that public officials must approach every decision with transparency, fairness and impartiality.
You have a pre-planned statement, is that what you're reading from?
Under normal circumstances, I would have recused myself from rendering a decision on the binding site plan for the under canvas project due to my previous involvement as chair of the Houston Beezy Community Council and a personal friendship with a representative under canvas. These factors, in my view, could reasonably be seen as impairing my ability to provide an unbiased decision. However, in this particular instance, the doctrine of necessity implies applies. While the situation is far from ideal, I understand the importance of fulfilling my role and ensuring that our commission is able to function and be a decision-making process and that the decision-making process continues. Let me be clear, my feelings about the doctrine of necessity are conflicted. I respect the need for it as it's a practical solution in exceptional circumstances, but it places me in a position where I must act despite potential conflicts of interest. It is a responsibility that I take with the utmost seriousness. To the best of my ability, I will approach this decision with full transparency, mindful of the fact that I have expressed my concerns about my impartial ability, impartiality. The doctrine of necessity exists to ensure that governance does not come to a halt and I will respect its application in this case.
So I will second your motion, Madam Chair, for discussion.
Okay, motion and a second discussion. Would you like to go first?
Is there anything that you could see that would be a reason or rationale for denying this?
I cannot because it's ver- just verifying that the conditions have been met to this point, to the point of the binding site plan.
I would add that that's speculation.
If that is speculation, I would hope that information would come forward uh that does not cross all of our county departments in essence accusing them that they don't know what they're doing.
For me too, the binding site plan, approval of the binding site plan is our regular process we move through. And um this has been an ongoing permit, I inherited it, you inherited it and it's moving through its processes and we came to this at the stage where it had been approved by the courts, we can't back this up, we can't change that. And so with normal process for me, tell me if I'm right or wrong, the binding site plan then puts the feet to the fire. That makes sure that these lists are followed and staff does their jobs and we ensure everything that anybody had um concerns about for uh developing and for operating uh has oversight and gets met.
Yes, it doesn't mean our job's done, it's it's the starting point and so that's why I put all these other conditions because it's our job now to make sure all these others, because there's a lot of conditions that are important to the people, whether emergency evacuation plan and those type of issues are key and critical that we need to make sure happen, but there are places per the approval that they take place and that's after the binding site plan, so this does set everything in motion and allows under canvas to begin.
Okay. That was my only statement.
I would ask um if Commissioner Christopher has any findings in which uh can contradict the uh beliefs of all of our staff, our Public Works Department, our Environmental Health Department, our Planning Department, that would be a reason and rationale for voting no, because if he has that those facts, I would definitely like to see those before voting.
I do have reasons and rationale. Uh I do believe they're valid. And maybe you're privy to more things that I'm privy to, I don't know. Um but um am I going to disclose them here and now of what my uh issues and concerns are going into this process, the answer is no.
So um.
So I understand that the commissioner relegating his duties as a county commissioner on the basis of non-fact.
Well, and you're speculating, you're making, okay, thank you.
Thank you, I think we're going to move forward and I don't think we're going to digress into this, this is about process and following our process and giving our departments the tools that they need to follow through to ensure that we have a good product and it quells any controversy or concerns that the public does have.
And I am well within my right to do what I'm doing.
And um we also all have personal opinions, personal support, but we need to set all of that aside, myself included today and move forward with the proper process, so. Um that being said, is there any more discussion? Other than.
No, I.
Pertinent.
This is, this is a simple, should be a very simple discussion, should have been a very simple decision. Uh we either accept the uh findings of our staff that uh everything that needed to be done until this point has been done and our duty as the Board of County Commissioners is uh to look at that and look at that information and I believe that uh we do have the agreements from both our building, planning, public works, that all of the requirements pri- prior to the binding site plan have been approved. Uh whether we like or dislike the project has no bearing on this, we delegated that authority long ago at the beginning of our tenure and that was through the conditional use permit process which is over and it has been adjudicated by the courts and we all we are doing here is fulfilling the duties as required by statute for our positions.
You are absolutely correct, sir.
Okay. So barring no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you, Scott.
Think you need to ask for abstentions and.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Christopher, I'm not used to those, so all those opposed.
Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes, thank you.
Madam Chair, I would request that we add uh for new uh, did you guys add anything for new business when you came in?
No.
Okay, I would request that we add a conversation on the corner position and we also add uh oh, there was one more discussion that we needed to have.
Didn't we have it earlier, we were talking about how to do the meeting?
Uh no. Um I gotta remember how I did the conversation with, we'll just do the uh conversation on the corner for right now.
Do you need a pen?
Yes, please.
This one doesn't have a signature on it.
Well, I get a spot for mine too, don't I?
Okay, I don't know what we do when you say that.
You think I'm gonna leave it blank for somebody to fill in later, you're wrong.
Mickey Mouse.
I think you, oh, we also wanted to talk, Jen wanted to talk about the memo.
Yes, thank you, that's what it was. Yes, Madam Chair, I'd also like to uh add the uh memo discussion.
Do you want mine?
Uh I have yours. Was there two places or one place?
Just one. Yeah, there's nothing on that one, it's just our auditor. Pass it down to Lori. Okay. So what were we starting with? What was the two? Okay, thank you.
Would you like an update?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I did have a conversation with Tom Landon from Skamania County, he was supposed to be talking with the other Skamania County uh commissioners today, I've sent him an e- uh message in an email, have not heard back.
Okay.
Um being that it is one thirty and I haven't heard back, my uh my recommendation would be that we uh put out the advertisement for the corner position uh with a point six to a one point O FTE, include both in there so that we can have those discussions as we work through the process, whether Skamania County comes on or not. I did have a conversation with staff earlier today that even at the point six, they are still eligible for benefits, they are just prorated benefits.
Okay.
And so I think like your health insurance at a point six would cost like four hundred and something dollars a month. So you still do get some of the benefits, but not all of the benefits, so with that and uh with checking with staff that we are able to move forward and advertise it anywhere from a point six to a one point O. Uh and then that gives us some of the negotiation when we do find candidates. Um because we don't even know what part of an FTE would be in the first place.
How many hours, I think you told me that, is a point six?
Uh twenty four hours.
Twenty four hours.
Why would we not just wait until Thursday when we might get an answer from Skamania?
Because I want to uh, when we, when I start running the numbers backwards, if we hire someone and they have to go out and get the training so that they can legally do it on Janu- on January one, when you backdate that, it's going to be cutting it close even from today, Thursday's going to be cutting it even closer uh because they, it just doesn't work.
It'll be really easy to just update the job posting.
Okay.
But there's.
The information is.
There's some additional information we need, we haven't set a salary. Um we have to have that discussion and just a reminder, the job description I created has not been reviewed by by uh anybody that has experience as a coroner. I looked at six or seven different counties and created it, but um and I'm pretty sure it's close to accurate, but I can attest to the fact that it checks all the boxes it might need. Um I just, I I mentioned that before, I mention it again. And I guess the question on where to place the salary, of course, is your decision. If it's ultimately going to become an elected position, then you may want to include it with what the other electeds make or when you if you post it higher and then make it elected, you either leave it higher and create an inequity amongst the electeds or it may be that's appropriate based on background, I don't know, or you'll you'll lower the pay to the electeds in that has its own baggage.
Yeah, I would not, I I don't know that it has to be the same as the electeds, but I would certainly hope we're not going to make it more because that's going to open a big giant can of worms.
Um so and on the other hand, on the position I do know has a lot of training requirements that's um has a lot of um knowledge requirements and I think there's in the statute some um certifications, that may not be the right word, that they have to, I think in the first twelve months, they have to um, I believe. Again, I, this is not my area of expertise of the this position, so um one could argue could be paid higher. The the current electeds uh at uh ninety two thousand six forty three, at least for the assessor auditor clerk and treasurer um would place it anywhere from grade seventy two to seventy six, so if you want to find a midpoint.
All exempt?
Yeah, they're all, yeah, that's where the managers and the directors typically are paid in those in in that range and not not exclusively, but um they're all exempt.
What is Doc's recommendation for what grade to put it at?
We've been talking, I really don't have one, I I'm not sure, I mean, if you 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 could put it at seventy six, some would argue it's a director level, it's going to be um um and and there are, there are requirements, if this is um
I I would, I would think we would range it from a seventy two to a seventy six when we post based on because I I don't know that somebody deserves the high end if they're coming in with no certifications. But if they're coming in with all the certifications, okay. Um.
I don't. I don't think you can post it for four different grades, though.
Never done that, remember, there are ten steps in each range, so if you pick something that would give you that flexibility. Um I mean, we we've been talking about this quite a bit today, trying to figure out where to make the recommendation, whether you link it to the fact it could be elected, that's only for you to know if you're going to actually make it.
And then it changes when it becomes elected, but even at at any step, seventy six range one is still less than the electeds, isn't it?
Yes, so currently the uh assessor auditor clerk and treasurer are all forty four dollars and fifty four cents per hour and step one for grade seventy six is forty six dollars and fourteen cents per hour.
So what grade slash step does that forty four fifty four come out to be?
It would be uh very similar to grade seventy five, step two. For grade seventy four, step four.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't put it in the seventy one to seventy three, I think that's too low, I'm just but um on the other, on the other hand, and I know you want to move forward, we've been talking about this for a long time. But on the other, on the other hand, and I know you want to move forward, we've been talking about this for a long time. If you start somebody at a fairly high wage and then expect them to apply when it becomes elected and the pay gets cut.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, so.
As I said, I have no interest to do it over, offer over what the electors are making, whatever grade, which seems like that's seventy-five step.
Again, what happens in a year or two doesn't necessarily need to complicate what you're trying to accomplish.
Complicated for whoever's sitting here either.
Because January one is arriving.
How do you guys feel about grade seventy-five, step one?
I, that's what I was going to land.
Either that or seventy-four, step one through five. Knowing that it could be elected.
What's, what's five again?
Grade seventy-four, step five would be forty-six dollars and twenty-two cents.
Which has been elected.
Would put it more than the elected.
Yeah, there's nine.
At the current hour.
One through.
I said one through five.
Correct.
Right, but five is over, so you need to do one through four. Or whatever that.
I, I'm fine with seventy-four, one through four, because if somebody comes in and doesn't have the experience and background or doesn't have all of it, they'd be at a one. Somebody who comes in who has everything that steps right into it, doesn't need to go to training or anything in December, could be at a four.
Right, but I don't disagree, but I think you have more one through seven if you went down a grade. I think you could do it at a seventy-three and do a one through seven and have more flexibility, kind of a scenario.
I know we don't usually like to do big ranges. Usually it's one through three or one through five.
The only time we've ever done anything else other than that, I believe, is with the prosecuting attorney.
Seventy-five ones, what we'd recommend.
Seventy-five one, not seventy-five, one through four.
Well, you can't, I mean, I can say that, and then if they come in at four, I got to come back. And if I do one through five and they come in, I got to come back. So seventy-three, one is a good starting place. And then if you, if the unicorn shows, seventy-five, one. And then if the unicorn shows up, but fully trained, fully certified medical examiner experience, which is not what you're playing for, then you have options.
Okay.
Yeah, seventy-five, one I can do.
I trust.
So we're just doing one, no range then?
The recommendation from staff.
That was the first thing I threw out, so I've got to be for it. I was going to go down.
He said he didn't have a recommendation a minute ago, and now all of a sudden he does.
We're conferring as we're getting feedback from you, and we have no idea what you want to do till we got here. I mean, we just haven't had these discussions yet.
I, I'm fine with one through four tentative based on experience too, so I could go either way.
And, and again, it doesn't bind you.
Right.
If a unicorn shows up, you can go higher, should you decide to. You always have that. You always have that authority to do that.
Oh no, are you thinking of applying, Dan? Because it looks, seems like pretty good wages compared to what we make up here. I was going to say, put them at the same hourly wage rate as county commissioners.
If I'm not doing this, I'm going back to make a hundred and twenty an hour thing.
Okay.
The direction, get it posted?
Was there anything else that you need to know? I thought you said there were two things.
What did he say? There were two? No, one was a statement and one was a question. They just wanted to make sure you understand that. I have not, I can't validate that everything that needs to be in this job discrepancy in it. I could send it out. I thought about sending it out to there's an association.
Considering it's a director level position, just make sure it says, and other duties is assigned, and we'll cover everything.
Next thing you know, there's a solid waste director and.
Hey, you're burying something.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're out of here.
Speaking of budgets, we can fix twelve thousand dollars. So you're fixing that as duties, is that right?
With what?
Don't ask him.
Thank you. Don't start it.
Still got to figure out where they're going, what office space they're using, but we'll wait till November for that, I guess.
That's fine. We'll find a spot. There's always out there at the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
No, that's unsafe, remember?
Scary, I'll go. What was your second subject, Jay?
Our second subject was Jen. Is she online?
There she is.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Okay, so I sent an email to the Board of County Commissioners at lunch, hoping that you all were able to catch it, see it, read it. This is, this email is in regards to the, the memo that the board had asked me to draft on behalf of the board in regards to the up and coming supplemental budget amendment. Were there any questions in regards to that memo? Were any changes?
I did read it, but I guess I would. The only issue that, that I kind of thought could be an issue was that, I don't know that the wording of there will not be a force supplemental, you cannot do a force supplemental. It was adamant enough and clear enough or underlined or, or whatever.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Keep going. It was messing me up.
So it's, to, to me, I mean, it said it in there the last, I mean, it, it, it was repetitive enough that the last, you need to have it in by October. The last possible chance, the approval will be November, blah, blah. But I still think there needs to be bold cap letters, all black and underlined. There will not be a.
It, it was pretty close. And are you going to leave it highlighted pink?
I could put it in red. I could.
Red works too, because I don't want.
I can increase the font size. I, I can make the subject line in the email when it's sent out.
Yeah.
I can.
I think that emphasizes it, so nobody can go, well, we didn't know. Or we didn't, we didn't understand that when we read it, or we took it out of context or any other. If it's red and bold and highlighted and underlined and, you know, I, I don't think they're going to use that anymore. So that would make me feel comfortable. The rest of the wording was just fine.
No, good job. I appreciate it. Say yes, please.
That is all three, Board of.
That's all three.
Okay, perfect. Then I will add it in the beginning and then send it out today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was easy. Anything else? For my seatmates?
There anything else for the good of the order?
Madam Chair, having nothing further before the Board of County Commissioners, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Noting, actually, I take that back. I would make a motion to recess the meeting until Thursday for the Budget Workshop and Town Hall scheduled for September twenty-sixth, noting that the Town Hall will be at six P M. Here in the Commissioners' chambers as well as online via Zoom.
I'm seconding, I'm just thinking. Make sure there didn't need to be any friendly. Okay, I will second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. See you Thursday.